This is a meeting of the Water Pollution Control Authority and Town Council Meeting of North Branford, Connecticut, Tuesday, September 7, 2021, in the Town Council Chambers at 7:20. Let's start with a salute to the flag. Michelle Roca, please.
Mayor Vigliano.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zianpiano.
Here.
Councilor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Diamond.
Here.
Councilor Duty. Councilor Downs.
Here.
Councilor Fawnen.
Here.
Councilor Code.
Here.
And Councilor Bleachia.
Here.
Okay, next we have minutes of previous meetings, August 17, 2021, Town Council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Diamond, any discussion? Can I have a vote, please, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. Correspondence and citizen statements are first. Anthony, do you have anything? Michael?
Uh, I don't.
No?
Nothing on my end.
Okay. Unfinished business, there's none. New business, we have operation maintenance services, maintenance services, town sanitary sewer system, Reed's Gap Road Pump Station.
Take it away.
All right, thanks.
Tony, your words.
Good evening. So, at the, about a couple weeks ago, at the Reed's Gap Pump Station, we had a notice from Veolia saying that Pump Station 1 was replaced around January this past year. We're having a problem with Pump Station, or Pump Number 2, which is approximately 30 years old. It was planned that when Pump 1 was replaced, that we'd work into, probably this fiscal year, with replacing Pump 2 as, kind of cycling through the process of updating these pumps, the pump has unfortunately, I think, beat us to the punch on that because it's starting to run at a lower rate, pumping a lower amount of volume, and it's working a lot harder to do that. So, we decided, I did update Michael about this, and, you know, the scenario that we're up against is if Pump 2 fails, and we're left with Pump Run 1 running solely on its own. We could have a situation where if we have problems with Pump 1 while we're waiting for Pump 2 to come in and get upgraded, then we'd have problems with the pump station obviously overflowing, environmental concerns and backups into residential dwellings that serve to that pump station. So, Pump 2, we received the quote from Veolia, which is the first item on the line there at $4,180 for replacing that pump. The upgrades to the system that pretty much are required to get both the pumps running properly, Pump 1 was never installed 100% to what we would have liked to have seen it installed at. There were several fittings that were, kind of, old fittings that were adapted to fit the new pump and trying to just get that thing going, and I guess the intent was that when they did Pump 2, they would upgrade all those other fittings. So, that's the second line item of the component upgrades for proper connections to the new pumps at $13,475. And the last was the $16,616 for control modifications and conduit repairs. The existing conduit that goes down from the control panel and the junction box is basically from the pump station up above is in kind of a disrepair state. I guess there's a lot of corrosion to it, and we have water draining through it, surface water during rain periods and things like that, so it's not an ideal situation. So, we want to replace that single conduit with three conduits, so there'd be one conduit feeding information to each pump, and then a return conduit sending information back from the pumps to the system to kind of maintain control of the system. So, the, each of the quotes that I included in your packet for the component upgrades and the control modifications kind of give you a bit of an idea of all the things that are involved in doing this. The pumps have to come offline. The person doing the install on the new pump would then have a back truck come in and be, that would be operating basically to withdraw any sewage coming into the pump system, and he'd be able to work in there in, obviously, a dry situation to replace Pump Number 2 and do all of these modifications.
So, I take it the total of this, this $34,000 approximately would come out of the capital plan on the sewer budget?
Right.
Is that where it would come from?
Right, so it's this, and I will admit that I just kind of updated myself on this day, and I guess I could have made it look good and said, "Oh yeah, you're right." But, it's from the Sewer Capital Projects Fund, which Anthony just told me that about $10,000 a year has been going into that fund, and we haven't really utilized that money over the past few years, so it's kind of like a little chance for us to catch up and take advantage of that money.
So, there's enough money in the account, Anthony?
$199,000.
Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion.
Is this the aggregate? There's a lot of numbers moving under. Is this one bid from Veolia and some subcontractors?
Right, so Veolia works with a contractor that's, if I can use the word, that's very intimate with our system, and I think that's part of the contract that we work with through Veolia to make sure that we're getting the right contractor to do this. And it's the same contractor that worked for us to install Pump 1, so he really knows what's, his company, they really know what's going on and how this system functions.
Can we do that and not get competing bids?
But, don't we have a contract with you?
We've done that in the past, we've run that through, and again, you can make the motion contingent upon Vin Marino's review, but we've done, Kurt has always come to us and passed it through Veolia as our contractor, because as Victor has said, it's a continuity of component parts and specialized, so we've always used Veolia in the contract. But I, my understanding is it's always been clean.
I know Kurt was very partial to Veolia, and I have no problem with that. They seem to provide the service. I just raised the question, seems to be Veolia our requirement?
No, I think, yeah, I think there's a provision that allows us to do that through Veolia, and that's what I would say would be contingent upon a confirmation from Vin in reviewing that contract, that you could make that motion. If not, then we'll come back here and we'll have to bid it out. But, in the past, and I think, I think we've had legal take a look at, I could be wrong, but we've passed it through Veolia before.
I would guess that there would also be a kind of catch-up moment for any other contractor that came in to bid this, because I don't, I don't know to what level of Veolia subcontractor would be able to share, you know, their knowledge on the system and what they're proposing. So, I think if we went through a bid process, we'd have to have people come in and kind of figure out the situation, what's going on, which might actually incur a cost to us, and that's kind of why we have the contract with Veolia, to avoid scenarios like that where we're incurring additional costs to get people to come in and figure out our system.
Yeah, 'cause I, I mean, if Pump 1 was done in January, I don't remember going out to bid in...
You may not have done all these auxiliary services, but the pump itself is only 4,100 bucks.
True.
I don't really remember approving it in J. Moore, but I don't remember a lot of facts.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion so that we can at least get it started, because based on the information that's given here and what was just reported to us, I would hate to see this pump totally go down and something happen with the new pump that we put in, given especially everything we just went through water-wise in the last storm. So, I would like to make a motion to approve replacing Pump 2 at the Reed's Gap Road Pump Station at a cost of $34,271 to take, to be taken from the Sewer Capital Fund, and this is contingent on approval from the Town Attorney Review of being able to do this through the contract.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made by Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Diamond, any further discussion? Can I have a vote, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have citizen statements and petitions.
Nothing, guys?
Nothing on my end.
Okay, well, let's move into the regular Town Council Meeting. First, we have reports of committees, boards, and commissions. First, we have Economic Development Commission, Roger Salloway's monthly report.
So, it's in our packet, starting on page 20. EDC will be meeting, because of the holiday, their meeting, September meeting is next Monday on the 13th. And, you know, Roger has talked about the sunflower project and whatever here, and I would just like, and I know this was mentioned a while ago, but can you just, the sunflowers in front of Town Hall, I know they really took a beating this year because of heat and excess of rain, but it really doesn't look nice in front of Town Hall. It looks very weedy there. Can you just tell Public Works to just cut that all down and make it look more presentable? I think the sunflowers, which, the ones that did come up, are pretty much gone at this point in time, and so the next lawn cutting, could they just clean that up on there? So, there's just updates in here about the local is good marketing and communication initiative that is going on in town, and then the Northford 120 Luxury Apartment phase that is going on with Belafonte, and what, where that is in the process going forward. So, that's basically, and their meeting is next week.
Okay, thank you, Rose. Next, we have Parks and Recreation.
Their next meeting is on September 28, and the August meeting was canceled, but the new Northford Park has reopened. That is all, the new playground equipment is installed up there, and I know they are working on now North Farms, replacing all of that playground equipment.
Good. Okay, thank you. Police Commission.
Next, next Police Commission meeting is September 13.
Okay, next we have Fire Commission.
Nothing to report, I was away, so.
Okay, next we have Board of Education, Town Council Communication Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Next is Planning and Zoning Commission.
I did not attend.
Next, we have Finance Subcommittee.
Okay, so are we having a meeting tomorrow? Because I did not see an agenda posted. And that was discussed at our August 17 meeting about having a 9:00-8:00 Finance Committee meeting, but I didn't see an agenda, so I would assume that meeting is not happening.
It didn't get posted, no.
Okay, so, can we do one for 9:15?
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. All right, next we have Permanent Project Building Committee, North Branford High School and North Branford Police Department. Yeah, sure. You've been here before.
I'll try and keep it short. So, Al Rose, Forty Belly Road. So, the high school's looking good, the bids are looking good. We haven't, we have, we're getting to meet last night, so we're gonna meet Thursday night, and we'll probably get the final, you know, almost the final numbers for the bids, and they bid the whole thing for the whole three-year project, so, but everything, everything looked good, and it looked like it was, at this point, I'll say on, below, or just above budget, but it really looked pretty good, so, especially after, though we went through the PD. So, we were pretty happy about that. On the police station, we're, we're still struggling with where to put it, and we had, you know, the more you get into it, and then the more time we had to look at it, the Moody property has some issues, has issues with the sideline, has issues with the grade, has issues with the future of doing anything with the grades up there. So, we, you know, as a committee, have decided that we've got to look elsewhere. And unfortunately, that, that, you know, cost us money to look elsewhere. So, what I'm asking tonight is for permission to have Bill Silva look at, so we want to look at 1599 down near off Route 80, and then also the Augur property. As a committee, we'd like to look at 1599 first and have Bill Silva have the site engineer, Jim Credy, or Chris Cole Engineering, you know, take a, take a thorough look at it, not, not design it there, but look at it and tell us if it works. You know, does it work? Does everything in the future that the PD would need fit there? And just, you know, have a, have somebody look at it that actually can, and look at there's some right-of-ways across the property and stuff that, that, you know, the surveyor and engineer would know what the ramifications are of building there. And just the, when the highway got widened, they had a drainage management cost across it, and I believe from the research that the chief has done, that that went away once they finished their project. But, you know, somebody like Jim Credy would be able to make sure that the building would fit there, that it meets all the requirements that they're asking for, and then it meets it in the future. So, we'd like to look at that, and then, but, you know, so for you guys, it's, are you willing to put it there? Because we don't want to waste any money if, if the Town Council isn't willing to go there. We don't know that we want to go there yet, so, you know, we're not looking for any type of a decision tonight, but, but to spend a little more money to look at it, if, if the Town Council is just dead-set against it, or has something else planned for it, then, then we'll have to look up at the Augur property, which is kind of looking like our second choice ahead of the Moody property as a committee, just, and we'd be, you know, so then on that one, you guys have to look at events that we have there, because it would take up, you know, about four acres of property wherever we put it. So, for tonight, we're looking for just kind of a go-ahead to, to, you know, I don't want to say study.
Scarcity.
Yeah, yeah.
More of an evaluation, site evaluation.
Evaluate that property first, if we come up with some snags, then we evaluate the next property.
Do you know about how much?
What are we talking?
Yeah.
What's that?
Do you know about how much?
So, I wasn't able to get, to get a number, but he did, the last thing was, what was the last one, about?
That was $3,500.
$3,500. I'm thinking I want to do a little more thorough investigation there, so I'm thinking it'd be probably somewhere around $5,000, because he can, he can, you know, spend some time researching the deeds and looking at the contours and looking at the wetlands and come back and tell us, "Yeah, it would work here," or, "No, it won't work here because of these reasons," so.
$5,000 each?
So, I think, I think it'd probably be $5,000 each.
Each, meaning what, Augur and?
Augur and, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But I'm, but, yeah, so, you know, we can look at, as a committee, we voted to look at 1599 first, and, you know, I don't know if, I know the chief's here, and he had, we had, we had asked him about, you know, we'd asked several questions about it. We asked about the access to it and how that would affect them, and, and we asked about, you know, the location, and, and I don't want to speak for him because he's in the room, but...
Well, we'd be happy to hear from him.
Oh, hold on a second. So, when you mean look at 1599 first, what exactly does that mean?
It means that as a committee, we feel that that's a good location for it, that would be, if it works there, then I think that we would head in that direction, but we don't know that it works there.
So, that'll be your first choice, you just want to confirm that?
Right.
Let me just raise one more other question. The hesitation, we talked about this a month or two ago, there were concerns about the Moody property and the discussion center, and I wondered, it made more sense to go back across the street and look at the property.
Yeah.
And the big reservation, as I understood it, was, hey, that's going to impact Poco Festival, we don't want to give that up, and this is going to be really agreed about. What we've never addressed, at least from my recollection, is going forward, once the police station is up, wherever it may be, what happens to the old police station? Is it serviceable? Can it be used for something else? Does it make sense to the town to keep it? Or, like the old Town Hall, do we bring in whatever construction company, level it and put some fill-in? Because if that's going to happen, the reservation about using up land at the Augur site is certainly going to be less, if not eliminated, because we're going to be putting back into available land, the site of the present police station. And if that's so, does that impact your preferences in terms of location?
So, there's, you have valid points, Joe, like you always do. Can I add something?
Sure.
So, I'm not in favor of putting it on the Poco Festival, I pretty much express that to a lot of people, and it has nothing to do with the Poco Festival. That's a central location, a lot of times this town feels like two different towns, Northford and North Branford. I've always saw that property as something that's underutilized on a regular basis. I would love to do something on that property down the road where, like North Haven does a Thursday night concert series, and their citizens can come out and enjoy concerts and stuff like that. I think it's underutilized, Poco Festival aside, and I think if we lose that property, if we take away that property, we really don't have anything else, we don't have a town center. So, that, that's my concern about that property. I know some people disagree, well, that's fine. But, on the flip side, the 1599 property, I think, is an ideal piece of property for, it's a compromise between the two, because there's opposing views on the two properties on Forest Road. You put it on Route 80, you've got gas, sewer, water, and for my...
UI electric.
What's that?
UI electric.
UI electric. But, it just seems like it makes more sense there, and it's not, just so people understand too, when you're talking about police, it's not like fire, where you have to have them strategically placed around, it doesn't really matter where the police department is, because officers are assigned to different districts, so they're going to be in their districts being able to respond to, so, it doesn't, because it's over on one side of the town, I don't want people to think that there's going to be less coverage over in Northford.
Yeah, that's not sufficient.
Yeah, so that's just, that's just my two cents, and, you know, that's kind of how I'm looking at it, but...
I'm looking at it quite a bit different. I'm looking at it, the ideal spot would be the Augur, and the reason why is that is the central point, and we are trying to have, over, over the next decades, create a town center, and that could be step number one. It's easy, easily accessible, where I don't believe Wallfield will be easily accessible. It never has been ever, and now we have two and a half lanes on one side and three on the other side. Yes, and someone's going to say, "Well, we, we're going to do it through the woods driveway out by the church," and maybe, or somewhere over there, I could have, I could have the, I could have the, the area a little bit off, but the other thing is, it's the only piece of open land we have on the North Branford side, and ideally, if we really want to have some foresight, it could be a, it could be a park with all our historical buildings in it, although we bulldoze, bulldoze down Center School, which, you know, we can't, we can't do anything about that now, but all the things that are shoehorned in at the Atwater Library, people could enjoy with some park benches and so forth. You know, and then someone, people make comments, and we all do it, and, "Well, will we ever have a town center?" Well, we probably said the same thing, maybe during the Town Hall, the newest Town Hall here, we might have said the same thing about Company 4, and we might have said the same thing about the two libraries. If we started, we have to start somewhere to have this concept be realized, in my opinion, you know, and that's, that's, that has far-reaching benefits for the town in years to come.
I agree, in that, I do feel like we're talking about where to put this, making opportunity, when is this new Town Hall going to become the old Town Hall, is one question I have, in terms of moving towards a town center? Is there an opportunity for there to be a police station Town Hall planned together, a mixed-use building like that? And I feel like the future of that old or the existing police station should be included in whatever plan we do, otherwise there's going to be a building there that is going to be decommissioned, we don't know, I don't know if we know what the role of that will have on.
It hasn't been discussed.
Yeah.
I mean, to the extent of making a decision.
The whole has to be in the same discussion, in the same plan, as opposed to piecemeal, and then everything's going to be, or else everything's just going to be disconnected.
The other thing is, excuse me, I know that we had a committee about, you know, the future of the town center concept, and, you know, there's, I, I, and I even, as I understand it, there's a drawing somewhere, but I don't think the public's ever seen the drawing. I know I've never seen the drawing.
I asked for it this week, but...
And, and even in addition to that, the drawing should be an isometric drawing, a concept, doesn't have to have all the exact elevations and spacing, it's an isometric drawing is a 3D version of a, of a two-dimensional...
Yeah, it exists.
We're just rendering like a...
Yeah. Of a town center with a U-shaped driveway going down to Augur property.
We have to have a vision of what, and that'll change, I mean, as time goes by, you pop one in, you know, I'm making it sound simple, you drop one in, but maybe the, the next one you move, you don't put it exactly where, but there has to be a concept, and the town citizens should be able to see that on the wall when they walk in the, in the Town Hall.
I was on that, I mean, I was, I'm sure I got a look in my files, I'm sure that it would be nice to share that with the Town Council, that, that drawing that we had, it would be, it would be a good idea to look at that.
And Michael, do you have it from our last meeting on the board?
Yeah, I'm sure we can get that.
I do, but...
I'm sure I have it, I don't know what for.
And where is the police station on that?
I'd also like to hear from the police chief, I would be curious to hear what he has to say.
Yeah, I want to call him up too, yeah, I'm going to call him up too. Where is the police station on that drawing?
We had like four...
Where was it positioned?
Four position holders of, you know, this could be a Town Hall, this could be one library, this could be a...
We had an amphitheater room.
Right here, the public, you have the Town Hall, the community center, PD, and then Amphitheater on...
But where is that? Where is it? Like where, what part of the town is it?
It encompassed the Augur property, and then through, through the softball field up there, and then...
So, the center is based on that central location?
Based on that foundation. Yep. I think a lot of the questions were with that, also, it's, some of the baseball fields would have to be moved on, so, which would be quite...
Yeah, how do you feel about this chief? What's your opinion?
Well, I have copies, but I don't... So, so I think, I think that the 1599 is a good location for the PD. If you're going to have a town center, the town center doesn't necessarily have to have PD, and there are a lot of towns in Connecticut that PD is not part of the town center. I have a list of different benefits, and I think the main one was that it clears up the debate of what side of the road to put it on, neither, is my opinion. So, you're going to have to relocate the Poco Festival, any other town event, some of the big things. So, as Al said, you have a lot of site issues with the... So as Al said, you have line of sight issues with the, the Mooney property. Well, the Walker property is right across the street. You're going to have the same line of sight issues at the Walker property. The other thing about the Walker property is, I just went to get gas the other day at the Public Works. They were having tryouts for, I think, children.
Such a concert?
Yeah. So.
Mike can make some more copies if you want.
Sure.
So that you can hand them out.
They can share one, right, Ron?
So, there were cars parked on either side of the road, all right? Kids just running across the street back and forth, and I'm driving just normal. Just leaving, getting gas. It's a bad situation, I think, putting, putting a police department in the middle of Buford Athletic Fields. So again, I think that the solution to stop the debate on what side of the street would be is just putting it over on, on the main. So there's, there's a couple of things that, that I think are benefits to putting on Route eighty. One of the benefits is, is, Ron said was that there's no impact responses for calls for service. Our officers are deployed out in the field. We're not like the fire department, we don't, we don't go to the station house and deploy from that station house. We're not in a residential area on Route eighty. It's located in the, the business district. I know that part of the, the police department plans where there was an attempt to get gas up twenty-two to the police department in Public Works. My understanding is that request has been denied, is that, is that accurate or?
Uh, just not likely to be funded.
Not likely to be funded.
Right.
So we not only came with a solution, but a suggestion is, is to take that money, reallocate it, and set up city sewers on the area of Route, uh, Route eighty, and I'm not sure if they have water out on Route eighty to Guilford Line from Lox Hill to Guilford Line. Now you're improving the infrastructure of Route eighty. You're keeping all the businesses on Route eighty where they already are, instead of bringing the infrastructure up twenty-two. And we know how generations go. Right now, my understanding is, is we like this agricultural community. I'll tell you, if you put services like that up twenty-two, the farmers are going to sell. And you're going to have businesses or more residential. Is that residential increase going to, is the high school going to be able to handle that impact? I'm not sure. The business district, the south side of town, has twice the number of calls for service, not that that makes a difference because we deploy the districts. The terrain provides natural security, the back of it is surrounded by a river. There's wetlands. And I think that there's going to be some significant cost reductions by putting on Route eighty. Heating, you have natural gas, so the operational cost for the heating should go down using natural gas. We won't have to install a septic system like we do on twenty-two. On the Mooney property, you required a very large retaining wall, which was very costly, about a hundred and seventy-five thousand. The fire suppression system on twenty-two. You need a cistern, a water storage tank, pumps to, to accommodate the fire suppression system. You also need a retention tunnel. The excavation on Mooney property was extremely costly. That would be eliminated. As well as the relocation of the EPW driveway and all the drainage across the street that are, that's involved with that. So there's a lot of costs. So these, these are just some of the highlights of some of the things that we thought about. And I think that if, if you, if you're able to reallocate those funds, that, those, those federal funds and bring these amenities down to Route eighty, you might be able to get some businesses and, and help with economic development and tax base. So those are some of the reasons why we thought that it would be a good location. The only, the only critique that I heard is the exiting from the, from the driveway. Again, we don't normally deploy to calls for service from the police department. It might be a little bit of an issue for the community coming into, to, to the police department. However, I know the fire department controls access to the control signal, the traffic control signal at one thirty-nine. If we could ask the state if we could also control both control signals, would it assist us in emergency situations of exiting and crossing Route, crossing Route eighty? You know, I have to tell you, coming out of Forest Road, out of two sixty Forest Road and taking a left to go to Northford is, is not an easy task either. The, the traffic in this town is extremely high. You could grow old trying to get out of that parking lot. So, and I wasn't going to say this, but to give us those fancy cars with lights and sirens on, that'll, that'll help get us out. So, you know, I, I think that I've given you about, I don't know, ten reasons why I think that location is good. Again, there's, there's a lot of town events that you could have on that Walker property. And I, I think that's the, the idea of the town center, I think that's the concept of the town center, not necessarily having a police department in the town center.
Gee, I think you made a lot of good points. And don't worry, if you're pulling out on Route eighty and somebody sees a police car, they stop for you anyhow.
You'd like to make so.
You'd like to make so. I know, I do. Uh, yeah, I think you made a lot of good points and.
I, I just think that there's going to be significant costs if you just, by, by doing it at that location. But if, but if, you know, that's not what you want to see, then, then, you know, it still doesn't, like I said, it doesn't eliminate the fact that you have a town center. A lot of New England towns, if you go around, they don't have the police department in the middle.
Guilford's police department isn't, isn't in the center of town? I'm sure there's a bunch of other.
I think Madison is one of the few that I know that they have a town campus, okay? And that property is not used for community events.
Guilford's used to be in the town center.
Used to be, but it's not.
But that's not, that's just because of space.
And, and it's not appropriate to be in a town center, especially Guilford.
Police department can be part of the community.
I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not saying that we don't want to be part of the community, we certainly want to be part of the community. But what I'm saying is, is it doesn't eliminate the fact that you can't develop a town center without a police department. That's, that's the only point that I'm trying to make.
And Ron made a good point.
Of course you, you can't, I mean, that's, that's, I, I, I agree that that doesn't hold us from, from making a town center. However, it gives us an opportunity to start the process also. And the savings, I believe the savings you gave us were compared to the Mooney property versus Wallfield, right?
Correct. Correct.
Ron made, Ron made.
Yeah, I, I, look, if, if you don't like it, that's your will.
We all, we all committed to a police station.
Yeah, but what I can tell you is we need a police department. You know, we, we're happy wherever you want to put it, but, but I just thought it was important to bring this, this location up as a viable option for a police department resolving some of the issues that we have and potential economic growth in the town. Without, without tainting our, our, what we call pristine lands in North Hartford. So that, that was the only, that was the reason why we came forward with this location.
And, and Al, and Ron, I think you guys are doing, Dave, I think you guys are doing a great job. And yeah, I think you're doing it the right way too, you're looking at the different, different spots and you're thinking about the citizens in the town first before anything else, which is really important, that's what we all should be doing. And whatever you guys come up with, and this, this sounds good, or whatever you guys come up with, I'm behind you. So whatever, whatever way you want to do it.
I, I would think, you know, I think we're lucky that we have two spots right now. I think we're all in agreement that the Mooney property, as far as I'm concerned, is, is somewhat off the table because of certain reasons, you know, and with Ron, many of them. But you guys are the governing body, the chief makes a lot of good points, I'm happy. Al and I were talking about the Wallfield property to have that additional piece to look at. I think, as Al said, and we had talked about this a few times with our committee, let us, let us look at it and see if it's a viable office. Maybe Jim Preddy says, you're going to, you're, you're not going to have the viable needs that you have and wants there. We don't know that until we get to that. But we have two viable sites that certainly will, will suffice, one of those. There's a lot of options going up Route eighty. You guys, as, as Al and I, Marie, a few others, were on that committee when we did that rendering. So it's something I think that, that we all have to look at. Do we want a town center? Are we going to give a town center? Are we going to have that option? You know, the deputy mayor made a good point. If we don't start now, you made four options of, you know, what if, we should have done this, we should have done that. That's something I think the permanent projects and this body with, along with the chief and deputy chief ought to weigh those options. Do we want that town center somewhere? And is that, do we want the PD to be the first flagship building over there, along with the other entities that may come? There's options and good options to go over Route eighty because of sewer, because of water, because of fiber. You know, and, and I think myself and probably a few of the other members have concerns about it as well. But give us that opportunity to look at it, and then we can bring it back to you guys to say yes or no, or whatever, whatever Jim Preddy may deem that it's workable or not, you know? And the expansion, you know, maybe the future expansion of, of the PD are options that, that we would weigh in. We want to make sure we bring you the best possible options. I know you guys are committed, and I've said that to the chief, we're all committed to do a PD, we know that. That's not a doubt that's in our mind. We want to make sure it's right, in the right location. We've got two options, so.
Don't, don't forget, the way that the PD is designed, the first expansion is designed to go up, not out. So the, the physical footprint should grow in the foreseeable future. Any other questions?
I just think that we should allow for both properties to be looked at equally. I would not be in the favor of just looking at one strong and then deciding. I think they should just put both of them on the table evenly, look at all the aspects of it, and then best piece of property wins, whatever one's the best.
And, and you guys have to weigh in that decision, I think, as well. Do you want to use that property? Do you want to give that property up for that or?
So if that's the direction that the council wants, we'll, we'll bring it back to, we'll, we'll, you know, go to our meeting and, and ask Bill Silva to, to get a call from Jim Preddy to, because he's working for, for Silver Petroselli, to come back looking at both properties, and then, then I'll, then we can come back and tell you it's going to cost a X amount of dollars to look at both properties. Get your approval and go forward.
I have one question, if we, let's, let's, let's say that you came back and said, Wallfield by far is the best place to put it. Would we design it differently? Because it looks like it's going to be on twenty-two, the design of it, in the, in the form of a, I don't know what you call it, farm kind of.
Farm style facility.
Where you're going to put it in a, in an area that it doesn't, that's not what the, the surrounding looks like. So would we recommend, I'm just asking, I don't know.
Although, although if you go right down the street to Agway, that's, that's the same type of.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the location, where it is, that's not, that, that location doesn't look like that. That, that's all I'm asking, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, I'm asking.
As a committee, we, we're not looking to change the drawings. The police department's happy with it.
Yeah.
And we're looking to see, does that long building fit there and does it work?
I'm just asking, I.
And I think the building is.
It's a good looking building.
Yeah, it's a beautiful building, that's what we've come up with.
I don't, I don't think it would be out of place, if that's what you're suggesting. I, I don't think it'll be like a, where's, where's that?
And we don't want to go down the road of changing Bill Silver and Silver Petroselli.
No, no.
We've, we've got a lot of time and money invested in that. We want to take that footprint and either put it on A property or B property with the same.
I think for the amount of places that have been looked at and the amount of money that's been invested in this, I think five thousand dollars, if that's what the, the max is, I think you would be doing an injustice by not looking at it, at least, at least considering it.
Yeah, I agree with Walt, we should look at both pieces equally and say, you know, this is, this is the spot, or this, or the other one's better, this one, you know, whatever.
What, what, what we'll, we'll do is we'll, we'll have them plot it on the, because we, so where, where it ended up on the Walker property was, was not where some of the committee was looking to put it. So we'll have them plot it where it needs to be, which is right through the flagpoles, you know, you know, running parallel to the road. That's, that's where it needs to be for the cost savings up there, because that, that's where the grade is, is pretty much level. So we'll have them plot it on that, and we'll have them plot it down into the town hall and, and come back to you.
So, so when you say equally, what considerations are you thinking about, what, what should be?
Well, no, no, it's not, not necessarily like that, Kevin, just.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, like, when you say equally, which is.
Like, let's not look at this one, and if this one doesn't look, look, then we'll look at the other one, and that's all.
I mean, should they be taken into consideration, traffic should be taken into consideration?
Should taken in everything, right? I mean, right, but basically like, I mean, I'm sure, I'm not telling you guys, you know, your business is on the committee there, but obviously you probably have a sheet of, you know, twenty things. So whatever one has the best location, whatever one has the right size, whatever, right? So they're, basically these two properties are competing against each other, right?
Correct.
Every, whoever one, you know, whatever way it goes, everyone's got the best location, the best property, which needs the least amount of excavating, right? I mean, it's going to be across the board, even competition, we're going to say, it's basically a competition between two pieces of property. And we're trusting you guys to make, to, you know, to make that, make that happen.
I think the committee wants to bring you back, guys back, the best viable option.
Right.
Would it be possible to have a drawing? It, it doesn't have to be just a.
Anything's possible, you're going to pay for it.
Yeah, but I'm saying, this is the visual, this is what it would look like. Here, here's the driveway out to the road.
So we'll take this idea back to our meeting with, with Bill Silva, and, and we'll get a price on doing it that way. That we can, you know, take that property and, and more like an artist rendition.
Because you gotta, you gotta, you know, I drive by it as, as we all do, many of us do every day. And I look over and I say, well, it looks like we're going to shoehorn a building in there, right? That's what it looks like. And I'm not saying that's what will happen, or that's how we'll, it might look, I'm sure it would look nice there, you know? But that's what, that's my perception as I drive by. So it'd be kind of nice to see it sitting there, and then see it sitting over any other location too, if, if, unless nothing makes sense there.
I'm sure the architect could do that pretty simple, with a simple computer rendering, right?
Yeah. I think, Kevin, I think if we, I'm sorry. I think, as we just said, maybe we'll get a number on both of those so we can, we can see it. And maybe it costs a few dollars more, but, but we'll have that, so everybody can see it. And, and weigh the pros and cons.
But we are going to look at both of them equally, right?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I think we're lucky we have two options. As far as I was concerned, the Mooney property just never was right for a lot of the committee members. We have two options now that I think, like you say, Walt, that could potentially work, and we'll weigh all the options. There's a lot of advantages going up Route eighty right now, but again, let's, let's look at both sites equally. Let's look at getting Jim to give us a number that works, we can swallow for both sites.
Why would we appropriate up to ten thousand dollars, keep the wall rolling? Otherwise it's going to be, they're going to be tired, I'm going to come back with a number next week.
We'll have to wait for a couple of weeks.
Two weeks from now before we say, oh, yeah.
We're going to be meeting tomorrow night, our committee.
Thursday, Thursday.
Well, if, if we want a rendition, an artist rendition, it might be more than ten thousand.
I agree. But if we appropriate up to ten thousand.
They can at least move it a lot of years.
It would seem to me, he's doing fifteen ninety-nine with a rendition, and he needs another X dollars to complete a, a light study on the Walker property, he'll have to come back for it. But at least we have progress we made. What I'm really getting concerned about is, this project isn't stagnant, but we've had a lot of fits and starts here. And at some point, we're going to run into a problem with our bond money. Other problems are going to crop up, whether it's escalation of building prices or god knows what. knows what. We have another pandemic just for the hell of it. So let's keep going forward.
I agree. I caution everybody not to get caught up in the artistic renditions, especially for a property, paying to do that on a property that we're never gonna use. I say we let the committee do their thing, we appropriate the money, let them decide what property. And if you guys want a rendition after that, just to see what it's gonna look like on the property that we've actually chosen, then, you know, then it's, maybe it's a good idea just for people to see. But I don't, I don't see a whole lot of value in that if, for a property that would, because one way or the other, you're gonna have a rendition for a property that wasn't as viable and ever used.
But you need to have, you need to see both of them drawn. Like, if you were building the dream house in two different pieces of property, you wanna kinda, we're not talking a detailed picture, you wanna see some.
Let's just say they're not gonna use $1,599, right? Now we have a rendition that.
For what?
We're making a comparison.
What could that?
You know, what's, what value is that? Because it has value in your decision making.
No, it doesn't, because it's not based on how the picture is.
They can price out the rendition while also parallel starting at $10,000.
Right, and that, that was Joe's.
Come back, is what you said earlier.
Yeah, I think it keeps us rolling along. We will be meeting Thursday. I mean, a couple of years ago, you guys, as I said before, gracious enough to give us quite a bit more money to do a rendering of what you're looking at right now. So we will get numbers, and we will bring it back to look potentially at the full sites.
So Joe, is that your motion?
It was.
Yes, second.
I'll second it.
Counsel, contingency or out of the police fund?
Out of, out of the.
Police project.
Out of the police project, yeah. There's enough money in the police project right now that they can take $10,000.
Like Rose said.
Not taking it out of contingency.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so the, so the motion, you got the motion that Joe made?
I believe so. Counsel, want to move seconded by Counsel Diamond to appropriate up to $10,000 out of the police department project fund to reevaluate?
The augur property in $1,599.
Yeah, is it 936?
Who seconded? Marie, did you second it?
Marie did.
936.
Four.
Forest Road?
No, it has to be.
No, no.
300 something.
Yeah.
Just put the augur property.
Yeah, just augur property, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion?
I think it was 298, but it is.
298.
Whenever you ready.
We were doing it the other way for the other committee.
Did you hear that, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
So before we leave the topic, I think we need to go back to Joe's point before. While the building committee is assessing $1,599 and Forest Road, I think the council needs to start discussing what is going to happen with the old police department. And we can do that, it doesn't make any difference where it goes, that's still a discussion we have to have. And I think we need to start that. Because it's going to, it's going to come into play no matter where we end up with the police department.
And if I could also ask, Mr. Mayor, the next meeting, we also add for the reports to the communications committee, I think it's time for the town council to hear a report, and I'd be happy to do that at the next meeting.
Okay, Mike, you wanna?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
So the only other thing on the permanent project building committee is, we haven't, we haven't been given the fixing the intermediate school project yet, and I don't know, is that on their agenda tonight, or?
Yeah, Rusty's letter in terms of his.
So we need to get moving on that.
Right.
So that we can get that out to bid and, and be ready for next summer.
Yes, that was a point at our last meeting, is that we need to have that ready to go, and we're, at this point, we're waiting for Rusty, because he's the architect.
Yes, yeah, and I, I did have a conversation with Rusty on that. I think, and obviously you have, you'll have the, you have the proposal that's in the, in the packet, but I think it's important, probably, and I would suggest tabling any action until we get Rusty here for the 21st. His, his calendar is free that he can be here to walk the committee through, and then, again, as Al said, we, we all agree, it's gotta get ready and packaged to get out on the streets.
Correct.
I think it would be helpful for Rusty to walk through, in terms, because the scope has changed. It's not, it's not just a.
It's not just the brickwork.
A brick and mortar work, right? It's a, it's a roof replacement type project. It's a, it's a large project. So, and I think having him here to go through step by step is, is probably the best way to do it before you take the action.
Right.
Yeah.
The only other thing, Mike, can you ask Bill Silva to make sure he attends our meeting Thursday night?
Make sure it's built, not prior.
Right, okay.
All right? Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Good night.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to suggest that we move up 12C because we have the first election from Branford here.
Okay.
I think we could do that.
What'd you say, Marie, 12 what?
Thank you.
12C.
C.
12C.
Yeah, but, but we also have, under the town manager's report, we also have Laura from the, from the animal.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, Jack is here too.
Yeah, so there's just like a number of things here, and they've been sitting here since seven.
Sorry, I didn't see her.
You wanna leave it then? You wanna leave it the way it is?
Why don't we move those two, can we move both of those up?
Yeah, it's a regular meeting, you can, you can.
Yeah, and we can move that up under the town manager's report, but Mike should be able to go through some of this stuff, and then we can just move it up.
Okay, so we'll do the town manager's report then? That'll, that'll take care of Jack too. All right, next we have town manager's report, update on COVID-19 testing and vaccine.
Okay, yeah, sure. The report is in your, your packet, and I think the most telling slide there is, is I think three pages in, looking at North Branford's monthly cases, and 90 recorded for August. As you know, I, I talked at the last council meeting, it was concern we were tracking out of the gate, the first of August, pretty significant. So now we know how the month finished at 90, obviously not as bad as, as April or March or February, but certainly weren't the, the numbers that we had in May and June and July, which were 15, 8, and 22. So don't, I don't yet know if that means there's a, there's a pullback, there's a leveling off at 90 to 100. It, it's just really hard, hard to say at this point. So the, you know, the focus is, has it, has been to continue to post information and promote testing and vaccinations and clinics. And we're meeting on a weekly basis with the health department to discuss in ways in which we can do more informational meetings, social media, press releases and so forth, just to find it, and, and put out more, more clinics and so forth, to try and get more people vaccinated. And, and again, just, just watching the numbers and, and keeping a close eye on that. So I'm not sure if there's any specifics. I know that, that Council member, Goad, had a question about hospitalizations. Unfortunately, very hard for that, for the health department to extract that information. So at this point, answer's still the same, none that we are aware of at this time. But with 90 cases, and again, I'm gonna ask them to drill down when they get a chance to, to do that, but, but, you know, there, those are significant numbers when we start getting close to, to 100. So I'm hoping that it's going to level out and plateau and, and come down, but no crystal ball. We'll continue to monitor, come back here every, every meeting to, to give you that report. Positivity rate is, you know, was at above the, the state average, and, and again, we're just, we're concerned a little bit about the younger population as well, and as you know, obviously, school starting back up, that's a concern. So again, that's why we're meeting weekly, monitoring that and collecting data.
Mike, did you say you didn't know how many, or there was not?
No, we don't, we don't know. There could be. It just, that extracting that information about hospitalizations is, is not as easy. The system is, is as difficult to get into, to, to determine which cases here have resulted in, in hospitalizations.
How many people have passed in the past few months from town?
I don't think we've had fatality since back to, I'll get you on that, but I don't think it's back to March or April. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
But I'll get, I'll get to your information.
Thank you. Okay, Mike, thank you. Next is update on emergency budget plan, federal stimulus money.
Yeah, so this, interesting information. I've been telling you about the, the different sources and publications, guidelines and so forth, and Zoom meetings that we've been on. I think the most productive was the council of governance meeting earlier this month, I mean, actually, last month. And there was a lot of roundtable discussion and a lot of information, and I, I hope that, what I wanted to do was put this large packet as additional information, which is what I was referencing in my memo. This is a great fact sheet and guideline information. So there's, there's quite a bit of information, but I, I pretty much cut and paste from that source to kind of walk you through the ARPA eligibility and potential projects. So I don't want to overwhelm, and I think that we could get into a, a pretty robust discussion. Obviously, we will at some point, but the interest of time tonight, I think it's just really trying to digest this memo, which is pretty lengthy, and, and going through the information here. The highlight, I will tell you, is in the analysis with the COG, I don't, I know that I didn't quite understand the full implications of the formula for municipal lost revenue. So in, in, in our preliminary discussion about, you know, maybe we might have had $100,000 or, or more, is completely missing the target. The other municipalities, the leaders were saying that this was, this was important, and that the formula has a revenue projected forecast that you can use as 4.1% in terms of revenue growth. That's a significant piece of information and the formula. So we're looking internally to recalculate that. And I think that the importance of that is because when you do that, you'll see in point, my first, my first bullet there, 3.8, the reduction in revenue, there's much more flexibility in 3.8 when there is a revenue reduction that you can then put into a capital account and then decide, as I've highlighted and underlined, that you have maintenance, infrastructure, even, you know, school, or police, public safety, a lot more flexibility than just water and sewer. So there's a lot to, to digest and to take in on this, and again, it's just, we're just getting this information together so that I can, at some point, put together a list for you to talk about, not only the ARPA funds, but what we anticipate coming, what the governor may do, what the federal stimulus package for infrastructure might do and might be eligible for us. And I talked about two programs that are coming through economic development that we might have an opportunity to get funds for. So I think we've got to line all of this up to determine what our best choices will be in using this. The first tranche of money, the $2,093,258.49 is already in. The second tranche comes next year. You have until December 31st, 2024, to spend the, the money on, on projects. So again, it, it's not to overwhelm, but to digest and come back at a future meeting to talk also about whether or not you want to introduce some type of process in, in public information, public input on how the town will decide to spend $4 million. Again, a lot of big ticket items. We just, again, are gonna talk about the MBIS project. There's a potential that there could be funds coming out of here for that purpose. When you think about air quality, the problems we've had with water infiltration there, this could be added potentially as eligible. So a lot there, and we have to answer questions and bring this back for a future meeting and, and develop a list.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Next we have review of request of interim municipal agreement with East Haven for assessor services.
Yeah, interesting request from the mayor about services for assessor's department. Inquired about using David Ambrose and getting assistance as sort of a mutual aid for them. They can't seem to find a, or I guess they've had trouble, difficulty in, in filling that position, and they're in the middle of a revow. And, you know, my thought was, as municipalities do, we help one another out, but before going too far, and, you know, I think we should have an agreement with them. David's inclined to, to help out. He, he's good at what he does, and, and he has the ability right now to do that, but only to a point. And I think, I think this would only really be in effect until November 1st or mid-November at the latest. But I think we need to have something in place to protect both, you know, David, East Haven, and, and North Branford. So I asked Vin Marino to craft, and this is where this agreement came, and I wanted to run it before the council, before we tie up David's. David's gone over to take a, a basic assessment, talk with them, try to help answer some, some questions that they may have, just to keep some of the information flowing for, for East Haven. And before, again, before we went any further, I wanted the council to be aware of that, and I think we should have a, an agreement in play.
So how many hours a week are they talking?
Yeah, I, I think they're talking about a couple of hours, like, two hours a, two hours a day for five days. David would start there at 8:30, maybe 8:30 to 10:30, something like that, and maybe even, I think that was a little too much that David thought, cutting that back to Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then being available by phone or email giving, having East Haven give him a laptop that he can communicate, respond to emails, but limited.
Did you send your removal revow line?
Yeah.
Isn't that like a three alarm fire of the assessor's office?
Yeah, well, most, most outsource in, in terms of a third party to, to do the field work and so forth, but.
What is usually the cost if you contract out for assessor services? You know, for the town?
I don't know. I, I can research that, but we're, we're just looking at, at, again, I think they're willing to, to compensate us for David's services there, and that's what we would, we would work out with them.
Did that, I, was that his salary broken into 12, or does that include his fringe benefits?
Well, this is East Haven.
The, the 102,000?
Well, they took.
Okay, that's.
That's East Haven's.
Got it. They include the cost of, so should the cost be based on what their assessors or what we pay?
They probably pay more.
They pay more. So again, if, if, if it's not something that is, or it's not something the council's comfortable with, we can pull back and say, you know, sorry, but, you know, I, I think it's just more of a municipal, and again, short term, to help them out in terms of municipal aid.
I wish, I wish Vinny was here, because I'm looking at, I apologize, I'm looking at termination, severability, and I would like to see something clearer in here, unless I'm just missing it, which is possible, where at any point in time, if we, if it's too much for our assessor, that we can terminate the agreement at any point in time. I see some stuff in here, but it's, there's nothing really that clear. I just wouldn't want to do that to one of our employees if it ends up being too much for him. I would like to have that out. I'm not opposed to helping them, I mean, we can help them, if we should.
I mean, obviously, they want this to happen relatively soon, and, and it's a very short period of time. You're talking roughly two months.
Yeah, total. Right. Okay. And then, you know, they'd like, obviously, you know.
Yesterday.
Yeah, right, yesterday and long term, and a lot more. But again, David's gotta be here doing his job, and, and, you know, there's only so much we can, we can do.
So do you or David anticipate any capacity issues, I assume?
No, and that's what David's saying, that, yeah, he can, he can do it, but again, doesn't want to go beyond November 1st. So I can, I, and again, I anticipate that Attorney Marino will be here. Maybe this is something we can circle back to before the end of the, end of the meeting, but.
That's fine.
Does this, would you share with East Haven?
I believe he, yeah, we had a contact and a call, and, and their attorney, I, his name escapes me, but I had put those two together, so I think that Vin has hopefully shared that with him at this point.
Okay. Next, we have correspondence from Jack McCoy requesting creation of a committee to study broadband.
Yes, yeah, and Jack is here. Jack came in to meet with me and Anthony and Dennis internally to discuss his concept, but essentially, in a nutshell, Mr. McCoy is asking for the creation of a committee or subcommittee to study broadband within, within the community, and he's willing to serve on that committee as a volunteer. A, he is a former, well, he can explain, but a former technology person retired from Manchester and lives here in, in the town and wants to help out with his expertise.
Okay, Jack, you want to?
Want to? Yeah, I summarize this in a letter I sent to you, please. My name is Jack McCoy. I live on 28 Basswood Drive in North Branford. Been here, raised by three kids, all-time resident. So I'm also the ex-chief information officer for the city of Manchester, where we looked at this issue of fiber optic cable to the residents, business community in that town. This is a project area that I've worked in as a consultant, and I've also worked in my role in Manchester. The issue here is that the state of Connecticut, that's kind of a unique thing. They have a law that says that on our telephone calls, there must be space left for the community's use, between the electric space on the top and the telephone cable, and cable company spaces at the bottom. There is a space that's going largely unused in Connecticut, in North Branford. And the problem technologically is, within your homes, you have computers and TVs and all, that can receive a lot of data. We have an infrastructure that can't supply a whole lot of data. We're going along, people are happy, it seems like, but there's an increasing amount of information that comes into the homes today, and there's going to be a lot more coming in the future. So my, my letter here points out that we're in kind of a unique position to make that space available to either the current suppliers of data communication, in North Branford, it's Comcast and Frontier, or a third party who might want to then provide fiber optic cable to all of the residents in the city, in the town. So that's the thrust of what we look at. The thing that makes that attractive for residents, of course, is that it would be higher speed internet and hopefully lower cost. If you study, do a little search on the internet today, as I did this morning, I think the average price of internet access for residents in North Branford is $54 a month for two different speeds, a billion bits per second and a very slow 35 megabits per second. What I'm suggesting we look at is fiber optic cable, cable which allows speeds at a billion bits per second on up to 10, 400, I mean, it's almost 100, but it's the future, it's the future roads for our data. The, the opportunity for the carriers are, the municipalities, North Branford being one of those, has that space on the poles going unused. And what I'm suggesting is that we have a committee that looks at making that space available to the carriers or to a third party who's not even here yet to bring in cable for all of us. There's something we looked at additionally in Manchester, and a couple of other towns, Bristol or a few others, where we said municipalities have schools, fire departments. Our public buildings are spread around the city, it's just the nature of government. Those buildings can serve as switch points to this fiber optic network. So if we add two things to be studied, one is the space on those poles that's going unused, excuse me, and the space in the, in our public building, which have electric racks which distribute power and today distribute data communications to our PCs and our TVs and so forth in the buildings, that space can be used for communications as well. It does, one of the things, it gives us an opportunity to make sure that space is for now and in the future. So that's what this, this request here is about. Form a committee to look at broadband, but also look at what the opportunity is for us as a community to encourage a partner out there in the provider land to bring those cables into our homes. The key thing here is this is not a tax-supported initiative. This is reusing the money we're spending every month as residents in Manchester to buy our cable television or Frontier connections at much higher speeds, probably at lower cost. That's the thrust. And if the committee can study that, come up with a one-page request for bid or request for proposal, it will go out to the vendors and see if there's a vendor out there who would be willing to come in and build this for us. That's the thrust of what I'm saying in this, in this piece.
So is the idea, excuse me, so is the, is the idea, well, let me just understand it. So there's a space that nobody can use unless we say you can use it.
And, I mean, yeah, municipal right-of-way.
Right.
All right.
Okay.
Call us in the school game.
So I guess by us bringing or possibly bringing in a, a new supplier or a new vendor would generate competition. Otherwise, I'm assuming that's what the driving force would be because the current suppliers are not changing out the fiber optic.
They are not.
Because there's, there's no cost for, it's not, it's not cost-effective for them at the moment.
Both Frontier and Comcast, that fiber optic cable in their infrastructure, meaning the poles that carry their data, they do not have connections from that infrastructure to you, you and your house. They have a plane, in the case of Frontier, a cup of cable, or in the case of Comcast, a cable connection that comes in your house. It connects to a little box and then it's up to you to bring it to wherever your television sets are or your wireless Wi-Fi. What I'm proposing is that we invite the current suppliers to look at this, this offer that we would construct, or anybody else in the country who wants to come in and build a fiber net. And there are several organizations out there, enterprises, that will commit. There's some operating in Connecticut right now. They're doing little bits and pieces of project in the neighborhood of North Branford. So it's kind of a no-lose proposition. I'm just asking us to form a committee to sort of make that real, okay? Bring it to the surface so that we can get a response from the vendor committee.
I'm very supportive of this.
Thank you. I, I'm resident of North Branford. I'm doing this for free. I have a consulting company. I do it for money, and I've done it in the past. For example, I've done a project like this that was about $37,000 from England many years ago. Manchester has a fiber optic network that connects all of their schools, all of their public buildings. They save about $1 million a year in telecommunications costs. So I retire, and I'd like to do this for this community. I think there's also probably a number of technical folks, people, kids in the schools who might participate in a committee like this to look at it.
Where is Manchester in this process?
Without me. Well, that's, I suppose, I know here. This was a project that was started before COVID. COVID hit long, everything else died, and then I retired. So this project's still sitting there. I have the details and the documents and all the materials, which when I left Manchester, I asked that those be released to me so that I could make use of them for whatever purpose I need, so that they would be available to the committee as backup.
And I read today about that, another party that's been coming into Berlin, is it, are they taking advantage of that, or are they coming in another way?
I'm not sure. Well, I know a fellow down in Berlin who asked them. But Bristol, for example, that was a fellow that worked for me, the CEO of Bristol, the mayor there, were very hot on getting fiber optics to the brands, to every resident in Bristol. Well, the difference between Bristol and almost every other town in Connecticut, it has ESPN as their headquarters, and they're trying to encourage people who work in ESPN to live in Bristol. And fiber optic connectivity to a person who's working for ESPN and wants to move a lot of video data, this is a big asset for them. So they were saying, they would make it a taxation. The town would build it with an element to charge for it, just like a vendor. So they effectively appealed with suppliers. I'm not suggesting that for North Branford, and I didn't suggest it for Manchester. This is reusing our own money we're spending every week, every month. And the only thing I think that there might be a cost for us is, and I don't know what the status of our buildings are, whether the data racks in the buildings need maintenance or upgrade, seems like they always do in most of our towns these days, but those would be a resource that if we're going to fix them anyway, we might want to make that space available to the project, which would really sweeten the deal for the vendors and their residents. I had a, I gave you a map of Manchester, I pulled it out of, not Manchester, of North Branford, which I took out of the library, and I looked for all the buildings, the public buildings, and it sort of goes around the lake. There's a line of buildings that go almost from end to end, public buildings, and each one of those could be a switch. There are three places in that map where we have gaps, there's no public buildings. Kind of goes to your earlier issue about where's the center of North Branford? I mean, we're distributed around the city, libraries on both ends, and our buildings are, and our schools are distributed. So in this project, that's a good thing, because you use those buildings as pairs and you connect all the homes between the pairs with the fiber optic cable. The long-term benefit beyond just having faster and cheaper internet connections is we are a snowball city. We lose our communications every year. We have tree breakdowns, we have big storms. We have an infrastructure that delivers data that's over 100 years old. This fiber optic connectivity to our homes starts to bring in the play dual connections. So if a tree falls down the street and breaks the telephone wires down there, the data from your home turns around and goes a different way to a different location. That's what the technology today, that's how it works today in our buildings, and you're, you're easily in connection, and this will work that way. And the communities, communications don't work that way as well. I think that would be a huge improvement for a snowball environment.
Mr. McCoy, one question for you. If you upgrade the fiber on the street, my house, for example, from the streets of my house is underground.
Yep.
How do you get the fiber into the house? Is it the homeowner's responsibility to pay the cost for that, or in your experience, has it been the provider? And then, second part of that is, I had a little bit of experience with this back in, when the grant money came off from the federal government with the computer in every classroom. I actually installed fiber optics in a lot of different schools back when that was going on. For town buildings that don't already have fiber optics in them, do we then have to incur a cost to run it to each office, each classroom, if it's not already there and so forth?
In the town, in the municipal buildings, either you're connected now or you're not. That would be the.
ERA, you know, the.
Eligibility for broadband under ARPA funds.
I think that might be funded to some extent by that source. This, what I'm suggesting is not solving the schools and the public buildings' communications inside your building. It doesn't also solve communications inside your home. If you've got two televisions, you have to have two cables going to them. What this addresses is getting the fiber from the pole, from the conduit underground, to the homeowner's property. The law says that those conduits and the poles have to have space left to the municipalities. And the, the, three years ago, there was a court case that said, there's a phrase in the law that says that space is for any use by the municipalities. For any use, that, those words were judged to mean exactly what it said. You can use them in your municipality for traffic switches, you can also use them for data communications, which is what Manchester did, Bristol intends to do. The connecting your home to the pole, that, I think, we would make a requirement of the vendor. What we're asking them to do is to take, I don't know, how many, how many homes do we have in the suburbs? 20, 80,000 parcels throughout the city? I'm not sure, whatever that map shows here. By the way, it's hard to get a map of the town of North Branford. The library had one that I had to kind of take a snap of. But the idea is that every single street with every single home, every single property would get a drop in this, in this deal that we're looking for, okay? Now, you as a homeowner might say, you know what, I don't care what it costs, I'm not doing it. I don't want to think about it. And you may think that's a strange thought, but I did a survey of a downtown business district, and the business people in those, in that district, 60% of them said, oh, lower prices, faster speeds, sign me up, I want to do it. 20% of them said, hey, you know what, I sell such and such, I don't even think about this stuff. I don't care what it costs, it's a small cost to me, I don't want to do it. Well, a population might feel that way, okay? But the interesting thing was, when I did the survey of homeowners, over 90% of them wanted faster and cheaper. They understood, and also more reliable. So in the case of underground cabling and so forth, the vendor would have to make the connection. And it's voluntary whether you, what you would connect or not. That's what I would propose, anyway. The committee can talk about it, and we can, we can debate that. But I think that you require the vendor to go by every house, there's, provide the drop to every house. Connecting the house is up to, is, the first time you put the project out, the vendors have to connect if, if a property owner wants it. If he doesn't want it, you leave the drop there and it keeps on going, and the next person who owned that house might want to connect up to it. So it's kind of like a sewer line or a gas line, in a sense. But I'm getting down to the details, I really should, I'm looking for a committee to talk about this kind of thing. And that's kind of a question I could come up with.
I think it's great.
Thank you. Any others having a good job?
I think what so many people work and promote now, too, I think it's going to be a thing in the future. I think it definitely is worth looking into.
I work every morning, I have a meeting. You say something, your mouth moves, you know, two seconds later, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, Eric.
All right, Marie had requested to move up.
Yeah.
12C.
What was that, 12C, Marie?
Pardon?
12C?
Yes, 12C.
Okay, why don't we do that next? And this is a review of proposed amendment for intermunicipal animal control agreement.
Yeah, we have some guests, and obviously, the council had some questions in terms of services, so we have both the representative and the director here tonight to speak to that, and also, Mr. Selectman Cosgrove.
Good evening, I'm Stephanie Mountain, and I'm the North Branford representative on the commission. I've been on this role since 2016. This is the first time I've seen some of you in person. The last town council meeting I was at was December of 2020 via Zoom. So while I've got you here, I know there's questions, like Mike had said, and we will definitely address all of those, but before I do that, I just wanted to share some information with everybody in terms of what we do at the shelter on a daily basis. And I'm sharing this information because I think it's important to know what we do for the community, all areas of the community, and I think it's important to hear not only from me as a commission member, but also as a volunteer, as a North Branford resident, and as a parent of a child who's in the North Branford public school system. So prior to COVID, the shelter averaged 10 to, 10 to 12,000 visitors every year. If you add groups like school groups and Girl and Boy Scouts, that number increases to about 20,000 to 24,000 visitors a year. On any given day, the staff at the shelter are responding to an average of 100 phone calls per day. These are people asking for help, injured wildlife, barking and roaming dogs, dog bites, animal cruelty cases, people asking to surrender their animals, hoarding cases, asking for stray cats to be trapped on their property, asking for food for their pets from our pet pantry, asking for money to cover vet. asking for money to cover veterinary expenses so that they can keep their animals, or asking for animal and human groceries to be delivered during the pandemic. Yes, the shelter staff and volunteers did that too. This is all done while responding to hundreds of emails that come in daily, in addition to managing the shelter Facebook page, which currently has almost thirty thousand followers from all around the world. My husband and I personally have delivered groceries to North Branford residents who were unable for various reasons to leave their home during the pandemic. I invented the shelter when North Branford residents have called asking for help with veterinary bills and unexpected surgeries so that their beloved pets could remain in their homes. I have been there when North Branford residents have come to the pet food pantry looking for food because they were struggling financially and wanted to make sure that their animals were fed. I have spent hours and hours well into the night trapping cats and kittens all over North Branford at the request of residents because for some reason, people find it acceptable to dump their cats and kittens at farms or barns or open fields, or in a box next to someone's mailbox. The North Branford residents are proud and grateful for all of the services that DCAST provides. They are appreciative of the support that we show all members of the community, both human and animals. This is evident from the many emails, letters, and phone calls we receive thanking us for what we do. For example, a North Branford resident's home flooded, and as a result, she went to her car trying to figure out a plan. She found a place to go, but there was a dog there. She had a cat, she couldn't bring the cat. She was very upset, contacted North Branford Police Department, who then contacted Animal Control. An animal control officer went and met this woman at the shelter and agreed to hold the cat until the woman was on her feet and able to take the cat back. The resident was hysterical for so many reasons, one of which was that she felt guilty for leaving her cat behind. She was assured that her cat would be loved, and by night's end, he was purring and cuddling with staff. We were able to text her a photo and video of her cat feeling safe, so that could take one worry off of her plate. Another North Branford resident came to us because her husband had a stroke and was no longer able to care for himself, and she and her husband were losing their homes since he could no longer be employed. She needed to rehome their dog. We took the dog in and noticed that within a week, something wasn't right. After a trip to the vet, we found that the dog had a parathyroid condition that was killing her. We fundraised to acquire the money necessary for the dog to have a life-saving surgery, and she was eventually adopted into a loving family. These are two examples of many exclusive to North Branford. We have been voted best animal shelter and rescue on the shoreline multiple times for all of these reasons, for the continuous help that we give our residents, both human and animal. As a parent with a young child currently attending to Tucket Valley, having DCAST in our community has been a blessing. My daughter's North Branford Girl Scout troop was able to read to the animals pre-COVID one night at the shelter, something that allowed the animals to relax and the girls to improve their oral reading skills. One of the girls in my daughter's troop had significant difficulties learning to read, and reading out loud in front of, in front of others was torture for her. As a result, she wouldn't do it, yet practicing is what she needed. Her mother called me aside one night when the girls were reading to the animals with tears in her eyes. There was her daughter, reading so loudly and so proudly to the cats, something her mother had never seen before. To say that she was grateful for the opportunity and the experience is an understatement. My daughter has attended animal camp for multiple summers with her North Branford friends. She has met new friends, interacted with animals, and learned about having compassion towards both human and animals alike. She is so proud to tell her friends at school that she is a volunteer, and her friends are so excited to tell her when they visit the shelter with their families and when they adopt an animal. Her North Branford friends have set up lemonade stands in front of their houses to raise money for the shelter, and her schools have done school-wide and classroom fundraisers to support the shelter. Students at North Branford High School have done class projects related to the shelter, and various groups like the Student Council at Jerome Harrison have gone on tours. The shelter is as much for the children in our community as it is for the animals. Finally, as a school psychologist, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the need in this day and age for humane education. Turn on the news or social media on any given day in Connecticut and you will see a story of animal abuse or neglect, even here in our communities. Cruelty to animals is almost, almost always leads to cruelty to humans, whether it's domestic violence or child abuse, the two often go hand in hand. Our new building will have a community education and training room where we can formally offer programs in humane education, compassion, and caring for animals. And this is something we are very excited about. Just to end, speaking of the new building, I just wanted to point out a couple of data points with regards to our fundraising because I think it speaks volumes to the amount of support that the community, close community, and the rest of the state of Connecticut, and the rest of the country, actually, the support that they've shown to the shelter through this process. To date, we have a total amount of fundraising donations upwards of $1,470,000. In terms of actual cash in the bank, we now have over $1 million, all strictly due to fundraising. Roughly thirteen, 1,350 people, businesses, or foundations have collectively donated so far. And sixty percent of the people who donated out of the thirteen fifty have come from Branford or North Branford. The commission members ourselves, which obviously comprised, is comprised of me from North Branford and the other members from Branford, have collectively donated approximately 300,000 towards construction of this new shelter. So it's something we're very proud of, it's something we're very excited for to share with the North Branford community. From the feedback that I receive in town, I feel that the community members are equally as excited. I know that you have questions not only about the project, but the shelter in and of itself. So if there's any questions for me, or Jamie, or Laura, we'd be happy to address those now.
I think, maybe you could start, I think one of the questions I recall from the last meeting was just the breakdown between number of service or calls for North Branford versus Branford. And I don't know if that, that was one of them.
So I, I have to get you those numbers for this year. Typically, in the past, it's been about thirty percent. So, you know, if we have, you know, three hundred calls, thirty, thirty percent of those come from North Branford.
So I, I'd just like to start by, I appreciate, all you guys do, you guys have a stellar reputation. I have a good friend that was actually a volunteer this year. And my kids too have been there and read to the animals. There's no doubt that you guys do a great job. For me, and I won't speak for anybody else up here, it's also our responsibility to look after the taxpayer dollars in this town. And it just seems to me, the way that the agreement's written right now, it, there's a major imbalance to the agreement. We're asking to, you guys are asking us, not even asking us, because we don't even get a say in it. You guys are telling us, according to the agreement, that we have to contribute one-third of the total cost, which is millions of dollars. Yet we have no stake in it, we have no ownership in the building, which doesn't make, it's, it's hard to ask a taxpayer to contribute that money to something that we don't have a stake in or ownership of. So that, that's troubling for us, or for me anyhow, as a, you know, looking out for the taxpayers' money with regards to that. The other thing too is that, you know, everything is broken into this one-third, two-third agreement, and you're the only person on the board from North Branford, right? If it's truly one-third, two-third, we should have at least one-third representation on the, on the commission as well. So I think there's some things that, you know, we should look at and we should talk about. I don't want you to ever feel that we, you know, at least from my perspective, that you don't have my support. Totally have my support, you guys do a stellar job. It's just, you know, this, these issues have come up, and I think it's something that we need to, as a body, look at and, and address. So.
Do you want to speak to the other?
Yeah, on behalf of the mayor, I think.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. First of all, Jamie Passworth, town of Branford, thank you for extending the courtesy to move, move up the agenda. Certainly, I think Stephanie and Laura can really speak to, as Stephanie has done, is really the level of service, right, that the commission and the shelter provides to our residents. And, you know, when comparing it to other communities, I think what the shelter does goes far and beyond, not only animal control, but, you know, in terms of the outreach that they do and the education which we're all there. I will address the, your questions. And, and I, I've, you know, heard what was going on, the discussion that was taking place within the council. I certainly understand and respect your positions without having full information. That's why I thought it was important you'll show up tonight. You may recall, I think it was last, last year, I attended your, one of your Zoom meetings, and we were talking about the project. And certainly at that time, I said, you know, I recognize where North Branford is in terms of projects. You had a long, lengthy discussion on a number of projects all over. Tonight, Branford has gone through that, is in the process of going through that same thing. We have a school project that we just did, and a firehouse, a library. So certainly sensitive to the budget impacts and the taxpayers, the burden that would put on the taxpayer. With what is, to the question regarding representation of the board, I think really the way we need to look at this is really a fee-for-service. We're providing North Branford a fee-for-service. You do have representation on the board. I was not here when they had a quick representation on, on North Branford on the board. But I think what's important to recognize, and maybe this will help in terms of, you know, understanding the, the representation, I think having somebody who can come and report back to the council is important. But as I said, it really is a fee-for-service relationship. The town of Branford is assuming, you're, the town of Branford employees, the debt is on the town of Branford's books, the liability is on the books. I think of other organizations and, Mike, you know, I know you were involved with this when we had the C-MED, and we're winding that up, that, and going, different towns are going into a different direction. At that point, that organization, each town had representations on that board. However, they also had the liability, the unfunded liability, and that was part of the thing that had to be resolved in terms of winding it up. North Branford doesn't have that. Per your agreement right now, if either town decides to end the agreement and move on, I think there's a notification process, there's a true-up at that point, and each community goes their separate ways. I think historically though, I think towns met North Branford, Branford have enjoyed a pretty good relationship in terms of our agreements that we have in place and the services we do provide. Like talked about the East Shore District Health Department, you know, the sewer, we have an agreement in place, provide sewers to a portion of North Branford, as well as the animal control services. So I think that's why it's one person on the board, it's really a town, a Branford department. You know, they are town department employees. And then I think that's why, you know, it's really better to look at it as a fee-for-service to the town. Coming back to the agreement that is in place, last year, and I know Anthony could probably speak to a little bit about the details of it, but at that time, we were looking at, there was, you know, I think we're, you know, North Branford was contributing a third. And I remember when I first took office back in 2013, and I had a meeting with the then mayor and the town manager, and questions had come up about that arrangement, and we were looking at it. And then even at that time, it was, you know, everything was kind of trending in that one-third. However, this past year, one of the things we were doing, you're, the town of North Branford every year gets billed, essentially it was a third roughly of our, of our cost to provide those services. We had some revenue that was, we had some expenses that were growing, primarily using some of the programs that were rolling. But we also had revenue. We, we amended our agreement at that time last year. So North Branford would be contributing net of revenue. So you're benefiting from that revenue. At that time, we said, what's the metric then? That's a fair way to establish what the proportional share is. And we went to a per capita. So it's still roughly about a third, right? North Branford's roughly fourteen thousand, I believe, and Branford's just around twenty-eight thousand. And that's the, you know, same with the East Shore District Health. It's a per capita, we said we have a, a mechanism that works, we accept. And so we then amended our agreement at that time. However, what didn't get amended was a section regarding the capital. And so, you know, as I said, Branford and North Branford have a, I think, a pretty good relationship. Our finance directors probably have each been with our respective towns for a couple of decades. And they work well together. And I think there was a discussion at that point, well, let's, as we did with the operating budget, let's amend this section. So North Branford would benefit off, you heard of the very successful campaign, the capital campaign that went on. It would benefit from that. So there was an amendment in place, so, but once again, for this project, we would be billing net of the other revenue that would be coming in for this project. So, you know, I, I think, you know, it's important enough, there is an agreement in place. If a town, either town decided at any point to end the relationship, there is, the current agreement has a mechanism in there, it lays out how to end that relationship. And then each town would go on, there would be no obligation beyond that point in time with the, the agreement had ended on the part of North Branford.
The, the part that confuses me is that on one hand, we're paid for services, which in my mind should end right there, and then there's the capital aspect of it, right? So again, we're being asked to pay for somebody else's house that we have no ownership over, right? And we have no stake, we have no stake in. I don't, I don't personally think anybody has a problem with the pay for services. I think, as I said, stellar service, they do an amazing job. But when it comes to the capital, it just doesn't, you know, I think the number I heard at some point was around like two million, you know, and that's a lot to ask of, of the taxpayers in North Branford. So is it pay for services, or do we have a stake and ownership of it? And if we're more than pay for services and we do have that capital stake involved in it, then we should have proper representation on the commission. If it's just pay for services, then one person on the commission, I agree with you, is fine. But it's, it's not, it's not balanced right now.
Yeah, I, I think, again, getting back to the paid for service, I, and again, I, I think any, the facility that we operate out of, which we offer these services and programs, which we house the animals, is a cost of doing business. So, you know, it is, if we enter into a contract, or the municipality enters into a contract with a business, you know, that fee that you're paying certainly is going to offset the cost of, of their facility or their, their fleet, or whatever it may be. There's, there's capital expenses that are being captured through, through any arrangement. You know, I just had a, you know, conversation with, you know, the curbside collection, the trash. You know, if they want that investment in, you know, for the town of Branford, you know, that, that investment in, in equipment is going to be real, you know, they're going to get that back through their fee that we're paying. But again, you're only paying for when you're utilizing that service. There's no obligation after, after, if, if for some reason the town opts to go a different direction. That's where, you know, there's no, no liability or obligation on the part of North Branford. And that's where it was shown, you know, comparing the difference between this arrangement and using the one analogy of a C-MED, or even East Shore District Health. If you were to opt out of that, you know, they would, you would have to true up with the unfunded liabilities of mention and op-ed. You don't have that risk today with this arrangement.
So you're saying if, so if it's a fifteen-year bond, let's say that Branford takes out for the improvement, the construction, and North Branford is part of the agreement, we only do three years. After the three years, we're not liable for the fifteen years, just the three years that were in the agreement?
Correct. At the end, and I, again, I don't have the agreement with me, but I believe there's a, a notice period when the council would notify.
Right, there's, it's spelled out as to how to get out of the agreement.
From that date, we'd look at what the expenses were that the town of Branford incurred, and then North Branford would just. So I, and I, not to, I think there was discussion, we were taking a portion out of our fund balance to, to. to cover the cost, the increase in this, this project. I think what was discussed at that time was if North Bramford was going to contribute again out of their fund balance, we recognized at that point, well, that would be, that would be, you know, you wouldn't be prepared for that. And we've done this with sewer improvements where we, essentially the town would extend terms. I think we extended it over five years to be paid over at, you know, zero interest. Or, and I think then the discussion from, the communication came back that they would rather just have it spread out over the 15 years as a bond. And that would be, you know, that our finance directors from each respective town can work out that arrangement.
And just so people know, I mean, the reason it's a concern, Anthony, if you, you could correct my crude math, but if I remember correctly, what do we pay, like 100 and?
About 135.
135. And with the 15-year note, it would be about $100,000 a year. So we'd effectively be doubling our budget for animal control for the next 15 years. And that's why.
Yeah, no.
You know, that's why it's a concern.
Yeah, I mean, we just, you know, we went through the process, you know, in Bramford, we have a board of finance, RTM, long government. So we just, we had the same thing. The questions that are hanging up tonight, previously I'm sure, came up through our process, right? Evaluating this project, we opted to move forward. You know, at that, this time, I think, the reason, you know, the project was still the same, you know, relatively the same scope when we first appropriated for the project last fall. It was, the need was identified. There was still support throughout the community. And, you know, to delay, we felt not only was speculative on what would happen with construction costs and interest costs, but there was also a risk, we felt, on the revenue end. Because as I mentioned, we had a very successful capital campaign. They received some grants. And the delay on that, there was also a risk on the revenue that we lose revenue. So that's why the town opted to move forward.
I thank you for coming down tonight. I appreciate it.
Questions I'm happy to answer.
I guess we're, Ronnie, Ron, made a pretty good, you know, all of our points wrapped all in one because, you know, right now, rough numbers, it's, it's roughly $800 per service call. And it's going to be about 14 or 1500 dollars a service call. I mean, that's what a taxpayer looks at, you know, and that's, I think that's what we're having difficulty wrapping our heads around. At least that's what I don't have.
Certainly, Congressman, I definitely, excuse me. I certainly appreciate that and, and, you know, when we go through the same thing and, you know, you look at what data is available. I think what doesn't get captured in those numbers is, you know, really what the service that they do provide, which I think Stephanie touched on. I think it's, and the amount of support that is throughout, you know, for this facility in both of our towns. So to, you know, just say, you know, per call, per data, I think there's a lot more work, I know there is. That not only the staff do, but also volunteers that do in terms of, you know. If you're going to compare animal control, like I said, to another town, you know, it's, I think you have to really ask, what does the community want? Right? And you can go and you can go back to, you know, you can look for just a strict, you know, dog control, Roman dog type thing, response, you know, get and return to owner type of situation. But certainly, I think we all recognize that's not what's being provided to our residents in our communities through the animal control. It's just so much broader than that. And again, not only to the, the animal control, the adoptions, the education. I mentioned the animal, I mean, there's people from both of our communities that volunteer, that participate in these programs. We hire people, you know, when we do the summer camp programs from both communities, from Bramford and North Bramford. So that's where I just, you know, caution to just do the straight per call and to what we're paying. Because even for Bramford, we would say, well, if we were to look at it, we would, you know, we would evaluate then decision. But I think, you know, we've taken the time to really assess the full scope and impact it has on our communities.
Thank you.
Anything else?
You know what? I knew you looked familiar out there. I can't see that far anymore. I walked in his office one day, a year ago, a year ago. And he was gracious enough, he sat down and we talked about, we talked, I think we talked about seniors in the town. I think that's what it was. And I really appreciate you coming out here tonight and talking about this. And your hospitality too in Bramford, when I walked in your office with no appointment.
Yeah, anytime, open door. So if anybody has any further questions or any information, I'm happy to get you that information.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cosby.
And thank you to the volunteers. You guys really do a great job.
Thank you.
Is it okay if I just say a couple of things?
Sure.
So thank you for allowing us to come tonight. Stephanie really did pay on so many things that I was going to talk about. But as Jamie was talking, it made me think that a lot of times I feel like in our communities that we live in, you don't really process the services that you're getting until you need them, until you're having an issue and you really need that person. And there are people I can think of from North Bramford, actually I spoke to one of them today, where there was a veteran in this community who became homeless and he didn't have any income. And he had to leave right away. He had a dog. And the place he was going was a friend's house and they wouldn't let him bring his dog. So he called and he said, I don't have money and I don't have any place. My dog's not vaccinated. He's crying on the phone. He's explaining his life and what happened. And I said, bring, just bring your dog. And he said, I don't drive. He said, my friends come and pick me up. He said, we'll be there in 15 minutes. We'll come get your dog. Just let us know what the dog has been through, like what he eats, all that kind of stuff. He cried and he hugged me and my staff. And he was like, this is beyond what I would expect somebody to do. And that's, that's the services that you are getting from us. And this is just like one story. It's, it's over and over and over again from people who were having issues during COVID. And we wrote for grants. We were probably the only municipal shelter in the state that received a grant from a very large organization. And then a business owner in this community and in Bramford matched that grant when we explained what we were doing. We were basically trying to keep people from having to give up their pets because they lost their jobs. There's somebody in this community who has a dog with diabetes, a little pug. He couldn't afford the medicine. He was out of work. And his pug was his last friend. He'd lost his wife and there were so many different things going on in his life. So we paid for that medication. We paid over $5,000 to keep this dog alive for him in his home. So, you know, there's just so many stories and, and so many other municipalities aren't doing this stuff for, for whatever reason. But we, we've taken that role on, that we want to do that for our residents. And, you know, we've loved having North Bramford with us. We've been here since I've been here. So we consider you guys our residents just like we do for Bramford. And I know Jamie said it is, it's a pay-for-service, but we don't, we don't envision it that way. We don't notice any difference between our residents in Bramford or North Bramford. So for us, I understand there is an impact financially. And we have been fundraising and we haven't stopped fundraising. We anticipate raising thousands of dollars this weekend to overreach that 1.5 million dollar goal. And we're going to continue to fundraise because it is impactful, not just to North Bramford, but to Bramford too. And we recognize that all of these people have put their trust in us to make sure that we can keep the impact down as much as possible. So we're sensitive to it. You know, I do live in Bramford. Steph lives in North Bramford. And we have lots of people who donate and who volunteer, you know, that support this. So, you know, we would like you guys to be with us because you've always been with us. You know, and certainly if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them and even after tonight, if you want to come and see me. Or if there's an issue, you know, always feel like you can call me or email me.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor, just wanted to, Mike just reminded me something. I just wanted to let the board know, when we first were, came forward last fall, and the projection for the fundraising effort was, I believe, $720,000 was what the goal was when we were doing the analysis and measuring the impact for each town. As you know, when we went out to bid and the numbers came out, what we did, we didn't just go back to, you know, Bramford's taxpayers and North Bramford's taxpayers. We went back to the committee and said, listen, you know, everybody, everyone's a stakeholder. We have to do our efforts into the game. And I think at that, initially, we tasked them with an extra 500,000 to raise, depending on, I think it was 1.2. And as you heard, they're nearing 1.5 million. So again, I just, you know, their efforts continue to raise money. And what that does for each of our communities with the amended language, as North Bramford would benefit from that as well, is that ultimately reduces our taxpayer share. So I just wanted to acknowledge the difference from what we were looking at to where we are today and the efforts that continue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next, we have community events and presentations. We have a presentation by Purple Dog Productions. On the website, design memo with upcoming presentations.
Mr. Mayor, this is the first of our series of folks that are going to be before you. As we talked previously about updating the town website. And I think it was Councilor Doody that had requested that folks come in to show some features and functionality that we may be missing. So our first person tonight is Peg Schofield from Purple Dog Productions. My hope for this series of events is that we glean certain pieces of things we might see the way that she likes doing something and Tara likes, at the end, make an RFP up that captures all these different nice things we want to have in our website going forward. So I'll turn the projector on for you. So I'll be on the projector. If you want to school a little bit.
I love following broadband and the animal shelter. It plays right into my hands. So yeah, Purple Dog Productions. It's very nice to meet you all. I've been in business doing web design, web development since 2004. So it's been, you know, since the internet started. I've built a lot of websites and a lot of different code. And I currently develop in WordPress, which I'm going to explain a little bit to you tonight and why I would encourage you to go in that direction. WordPress is used by many companies across the world. About two-thirds of the world's websites is actually built on WordPress. One of the reasons is it's open source, meaning you do not pay proprietary fees for a company. So if you go to some other companies that are charging you $100,000 for a website or $30,000 for a website or something like that, a lot of those fees are going to be based on, that you're paying for their technology. Where WordPress is open source and that means there's a whole community supporting it. And it is a very cost-effective, very quick-to-develop platform. And I found great success in municipal, nonprofits, small businesses, medium businesses. Okay?
Want me to drive or you want to talk or?
Sure, you can click the use balance. I currently provide tech support for the town of Chester, Middlefield, Killiworth, and I have previously worked with the town of Haddon. I say tech support because my business model is that I build your website and I provide you with a manual of how to update it. I provide technical support and training and let you go. That way you are not paying hundreds of dollars per month in fees on top of the design and development. And I am available for tech support. So take the, the town of Chester. I probably talk with them maybe 10 times a month via email. They have an issue. They have a question. They have a new feature that they'd like added. This site is over 10 years old and is definitely due for a redesign. But they are currently able to maintain it and update it and keep it up and running. And their community happy with it as it is. So they will probably go out for a redesign this year. And as with the town of Middlefield, same type of thing. They've been probably eight or nine years. And the assistant town clerk, the town clerk and a couple of other people have admin rights. And they update their calendar, update their agendas in minutes, add the bulletins. And basically I am a facilitator to give them best web practices, which is a very important, I think, counsel to websites. If you look at your own website, I can see the progression of how people add into it. So somebody said, well, we need a place for online forums. So you put a section for online forums. But the problem is, is that integrating online forums into, are they library forums? Are they land use forums? Are they finance forums? It's important to have some kind of structure and someone to bounce your ideas off of. And I provide that service quite a bit for my clients, whether they're municipal or not. As you're scrolling, you'll also notice that your current website is not responsive. You don't have a mobile version. You don't have a tablet version. That's the, probably the biggest functionality that you're missing out on is that your community is not able to access your information in an accessible way. That's not just ADA accessible, but it is, it is important to address the, the size of the font, the colors, the ability to bring it up on your phone, tablet, desktop. As I said, these were, these were all built 10 years ago and they, they do have a mobile version. It's not great. I would improve it. But this is not what I was contracted for. And that's, again, the services that I can provide are as a fee-based. So if you have a project in mind, I can give you an estimate. I can put together a proposal for it and we can move forward with it. But you're not going to be paying me every month $200, $250 in maintenance. The maintenance on a WordPress site is a couple of times a year. You need to make sure that the platform is stable, that your theme is up to date, plugins are up to date. That's it. Pay for hosting, very economical. So if you don't know a lot about WordPress, I'm going to just scale back a little bit about what, what kind of it is. So essentially you have a hosting plan and you can be on any hosting service. WordPress is, is what's called a platform. This town of Killiworth is not responsive. Very old site. So as I was saying, WordPress is a platform you install on your server. It basically gives the guts to how the functionality works. You install a theme, which gives you things that can give the site structure. And then you add plugin, which can give the site functionality. So all of those things either can be free or, or paid depending on how, what the level of sophistication is. But they all work together, put together a nice website. Design-wise, if you look at my portfolio at all, I can design anything. The, the advantage of working with a designer and a developer and the person who writes the manual and who does the tech support. It may seem like a larger firm might do a better job because they have lots more hats in the ring. But they're not speaking with you every day. So I'm the person that can handle all of your requests and can make all of the adjustments that you need and provide additional manual pages. And so the relationship that you build with, with your tech support person is very important. And if I run over by a bus, you could also hire someone else, which is nice. So you don't owe me anything beyond the website when you're finished with it. Someone else could come in. You could get your, you know, sophomore in college nephew to make updates for you. You can use a training manual to bring in new hires to work on the website. And all of that works just great. It's not something that is tied to me or to WordPress. Again, this is going to be around for a long time and the functionality gets better and better. So say as you're looking at, at some of the oldest sites that I built.
Sorry.
It's okay. I can see lots of things that I can change.
Where did I go?
If you go back to. If you go back to, let's see, if you go back to View All, the newest site that I just launched last week is the one on your top left, and that's the Church of Canton Center, the First Congregation Church. So they have three members of their board, including their pastor, who are making updates to the site and adding their videos and audio and updating their, their times and everything else. And so far, I've received one email from them in, in the week. So it's one of the benefits of working with a mom-and-pop company like mine is that the way business models are set up, you can pick and choose how you like it. A lot of people make money on the, the monthly fees, so that's just not in my model. It's not. I like to build websites. I like tech support. So I'm happy to take any questions. The, the way that I build a website is I start with a site map, I sit down with the committee members, and I help them make decisions. And honestly, that's the biggest thing about getting a new website done, it's about decisions. It's about what you're naming the tabs, it's what's going on your pages, it's encouraging people for the best web practices and to know the audience that you're addressing. The audience for a small community church is a little different than a municipality in North Branford, so you need to know and you need to have those questions answered. And I'm the person who's going to be able to ask the questions that you need to answer and also help you come to the decision so that you can get your site up quickly. My websites do not take six months to a year to launch, they do not cost $30,000. So I'm not sure what your budget is, I don't know what your timeframe is, but I've done a lot of websites, and I think what the people I work with will say is that it's the decision-making, it's moving forward on design, and if you have ideas, things you want to incorporate with WordPress, there's always a way to kind of make it work.
Is there any functions you want to show or?
No, the biggest thing for towns is calendars. I've done a lot of different calendars. The town of Middlefield uses a third-party that I really like called Calendar Wiz. It also has upgraded functionality that allows you to, you can click on the calendar over on the, on the right, allows you to even use some of your meeting rooms to, to book meeting rooms that way. The built-in calendars for WordPress are fine, some of them work better than others, but, you know, I think the ones that do. But this is your typical calendar, you, it's important to have your agendas up timely, and on the calendar function, it's where people are going to look for it, so that's, that's where I encourage you to put it. I know that you have a, you're outsourced agendas and minutes. I think having it in a calendar format also works for the community, and again, knowing your audience. So if you have questions from your community, those are the types of things we need to answer. So every website is going to be a little bit different. The town of Middlefield addresses a lot more parking wreck than some towns. You may have a separate portal on your website for just parking wreck, and that's, you know, e- each town, like I say, has a different kind of mission and needs to address their particular audience and community. So I think that's really the key, and that's, I think what I do best is, each website is unique, has this very set structure, but the decision-making body is the one who puts together the website.
Do you have some kind of a template or something where you start, help a community get started, the town, as to what they should have in there?
I do. Again, it usually starts with a site map. So a site map is like a, an outline for a, like a term paper, you know? How you structure your website is where is your content? So when you're doing a redesign, it's really important to look at your current site and say, okay, is that a useful page? Is that a useful name? Is that a useful, like, have people gone to that, that page and found what they're looking for? And how quickly did they get there? So when I do redesigns, I take your current site map and I give it my edits, my first edits. And then I sit down with, with whoever the decision-makers are, and I say, okay, let's, let's go over the differences between what you have, what I think you should have, and maybe what you're, we're hoping in the next five years, how things may change. So we want to give you some kind of future leaning. As I said, some of the sites are 10 years old, and there's still the town government structure, the boards and commissions structure, there's very kind of set, set things. I think you, your town site gets in the weeds a little bit by trying to combine too many things, and I think I would need to hear back that that actually works for your visitors. So people coming to the site, are they actually getting too much information on the page and not enough click direction? I want to go to your website, I want to find what I'm looking for. So even as simple as, you know, directions to the town offices, your address, your phone numbers, you know, your directory, things like that, they have to be one click, there it is. I need to find out how to find animal control, I need to find out how I can submit a community complaint. There's a possible. You know, do you want to take those kind of complaints, or do you not? Would you like those to go to the highway department, or would you like a forum to go in and say, okay, we're going to report a possible? Depends on your community, but you shouldn't have to dig around on a website to get the information that you're looking for. I redesign websites all the time where there are pages with one sentence on them. How's that working for you? Is that one sentence really, you know, couldn't that be consolidated into a better informational site? So if you go, like, go back to the...
I'm not sure why they're closed tomorrow.
Your town website. Okay, so you have departments, but economic development is not a department. You have visitors, but I'm not sure if that's tourists or visitors to the website. You have information, which seems to me would encompass the entire website. And you have online services, which again, I think would encompass the entire website. So I love the, the dropdown list of everything for online services because I would just dig through that knowing that I'm online. You have your government hallway on to the left, yes, which again, has your town council and town manager, and I think if you scroll down to boards and commissions, right. So this structure of having another flyout, very inefficient, we don't do that anymore. So I would reorganize your top-level navigation immediately and find out what we can eliminate and what we can consolidate. I think the homepage is probably the, the real heart of any website, so the most important information shouldn't just be in the navigation, you need to have callouts on your homepage. So if economic development is your, is something that's worthy of a navigation item, maybe it's something that economic development is doing, like a, your fair or the police building or whatever you're doing, whatever that part should be a callout on the homepage. So it can have a graphic, it can have some information, it can have a link to the, the next meeting. Do you want your public involved? Visitors to the site, same thing. What have you got going for yourself in North Branford? You've got these great trails, you've got farms, but there's no representation on the homepage, it's just in the dropdown. So I would, I would, if I were looking at that in the first, my first glance, I would pull a whole bunch of those things out and put them on the homepage for people to come to the homepage and see, click once and get to. So I want to know about recreation, I want to know about, you know, baseball, I want to know, you know, is there a Little League here? Is there Boy Scouts? How do I find out, you know, about the library system? I know the libraries have websites, but, you know, how do I know where, where to get it done? I think the, the quick links, the helpful links, those frequently asked questions are great for town websites because you really, every time your assistant or clerk or someone gets a question, and if you get it more than once, put it as a frequently asked question on your website, and that'll save you a phone call. So a very good reason to have a well-organized website is to cut down on the emails and the phone calls to your staff. They will thank you for it.
So again, the hope is that we have, like, I think, five or six folks lined up, probably by the time we all go through in probably early December, we'll assemble an RFP, put it out, once we get tits of, bits and pieces of what we'd like to see. And then hopefully, at time for the budget process, we'll have a number to, if there's money already in this year's budget, so we should have it all wrapped up hopefully before the budget process starts, but that, that's the, that's the game plan.
Yeah, so I'll just leave you with, go with WordPress, can't, can't miss. Think a lot about the responsive nature, make sure that your mobile and your tablet look great, make sure your calendar is working properly, and that everybody can update it who needs to update it. And think twice before you disregard mom-and-pop shops because it depends on your business model, so.
So, I don't mean to sound bullish or nothing, but I can access our website on my phone.
What does it look like on your phone?
Well, I just gotta keep scrolling around.
There you go. There you go. It's the pitch, the pitch piece. Well, and some people have really big phones, so, you know, it doesn't make...
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, and, you know, if you've really been thumbs and touching things and thin fingers, you can get around to your navigation too. If you have to actually click it, it's, it's not as, I getcha.
So, okay, so how, how would it know that I'm accessing it from a phone or not?
So there's, in the code, in the, in the WordPress and also how it's, how it's structured and built, the code knows to collect the view size. So it tells it, is it 500 width, these are in like pixels, 500, 1,000, so it doesn't, it can detect that you're on a tablet, but most, more, most responsive is by size. So it says, this is how much room you have, we're going to fill your size. So like the, some of the older websites that were built, people liked them in a block view so that they actually have a set order on them. A lot of newer websites have it open, so the, the content doesn't stretch all the way to the end of your site, but there is a, so there's a maximum, and then when it gets smaller than the, the block, it, it resets itself. And the font size changes sometimes too. So that's part of the design part. So if, if we get down to the, the mobile view, can I?
Sure.
Oops. Come on. Come on. Okay. So this is the mobile view of the Canton site. So you can see it has a different navigation, so with big thumbs, you can, you can view that. It has a logo that's responsive, so that you can always see that, and you can always see that. When you're scrolling, the text stays the right size so that you can read it on your phone. My mouse is not my mouse here, so I will fumble a little bit. Sorry, picked a long page. I'm going to pick a shorter page. We'll pick the schoolhouse.
Isn't that broadband?
Yeah, I know. So I'm going to look at, this is the tablet view. There's a scroll bar. So as you can see, the photos and the text wrap properly, that's what it's called, so that you can view all of these on a tablet. And if you were to go to a mobile phone, this is like an iPhone 6, it also views that way. The dropdowns work. I'm going to show you the footer, but it's going to take me forever to scroll there. Let me see. So all good websites will have a footer with content that stays on every page or almost every page. So it has your contact information, it has your social links, this one has a mission, it has some other links to their services, it has a subscribe button so that you can things, and then you have, this is how you access the dashboard of the website in order to edit it, and that links to me, so you know how to get ahold of me. So this is what a mobile view would look like if I showed you... Where are you? Branford. This is your mobile view. So not exactly readable, not a fan of the moving calendar because I couldn't get back to the place that I was looking for. And I would say your real estate on your homepage is not very efficient. It's a lot more things that people are looking for when they first go to your site. So if you look at analytics for websites, there's called a bounce rate, people go to a site and then they leave. It's not a bad thing to have a, a strong bounce rate because people are finding what they're looking for on your homepage. So if they want to dig in for more information, they can, but on the homepage, it tells you, town hall is closed today, there's a COVID emergency notice, parking wreck is having a, a big game, and the, the town fair is coming up next week. So all of that can be on, of great use on this real estate without having to dig into another place. And those things can rotate soon. So if your town fair is, is once a year, you can put it in a couple of months ahead of time and then have it just scroll out and put it back in next year. So having the real estate on the homepage play a really important role in your community interaction, I think is really key. I think a lot of towns don't, they want to put up public notices, like there's a, you know, an inland wetlands meeting hearing, which is very important, but I'm not sure that that's really as important to the public coming to the, the website as it is to the proper function of your, of your government. So having that hearing notice is really important, having it highlighted and called out, not so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
So again, we're going to have one, a meeting for the next few meetings.
Okay, let's move on. We have citizens' statements and petitions and correspondence. Nothing, we'll move to, Mike, you all set?
Yeah.
All right. Next, we'll resignations and appointments. We have the resignation of Chrissy Ann, of vote, from the Solid Hazardous Waste Recycling Committee. There's no action needed. Next, we have reappointment of Virginia Fallon to the East Shore Public Health District Board of Directors, term to expire June 30th, 2024.
So.
Second.
Okay. Motion, motion by Counselor Diamond, second by Counselor Fornin. Any discussion? Have a vote, please, Michelle.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstained.
Okay, next, we'll move into unfinished business, discussion in action, update on North Farm's park fence.
Yeah, it's still a, a work in progress, and at this point, working on a punch list. We'll be meeting again tomorrow internally to develop that and get back in, in response to the, the company to finish that project out, so.
That's great.
Okay. B, we have a ward of...
I think that just stays tabled.
Still tabled, yes.
Oh, yeah, all right.
For item B, yes.
No, okay, I see. All right, next, we skip C, we'll move to D. Review and discussion on draft 2021 proposed resolution adopting an ordinance regulating cannabis.
Yeah, you know, I put in after a conversation with Vin, it, I thought, we thought it might be helpful for the council just to kind of compare Chapter 88, you know, with respect to alcohol that's already in effect for the town of North Branford in terms of parks and regulation of alcohol. Kind of compare it. We left you with the proposed ordinance resolution to ponder and to consider, and it may be, could be crafted much along the lines of alcohol. But just thought I'd throw that to your attention and not sure where you wanna go with the conversation, but we left it, we would return and bring this item back for this meeting tonight, so.
Okay, Vin, you got something?
No, I just, just to put it into context, since the conversation on cannabis is very new and kind of people are all over the field with it, if you think of it in terms of alcohol, it makes it simpler, you know, because we've been regulating alcohol for so long. And that's really what we're talking about here, should we be regulating cannabis on public property and in the general public area. The draft ordinance that I provided you is as broad as I could make it. So for example, I said you can't consume cannabis on public property. I define public property, or property under controlled municipality, as everything from a sidewalk and a public right-of-way to a ball field. So if you wanna narrow that scope, you can narrow that scope, but I tried to give to you in as broad a fashion as I could. So what I'm finding in some municipalities is, you know, we don't want it on the softball field or the little league field, but if someone's walking to their neighbor's house and they wanna light up a cannabis cigarette, why shouldn't they be able to? That's policy issue for you to decide. Municipalities are kind of all over the place on it. But I just wanted to give that to you for your thought.
Okay.
Do you have an ordinance now for, I know it's included here in the reference to alcohol and, what is this, the park and rec, rules of conduct? Is there any other ordinance that addresses alcohol or smoking on public phone in town anywhere?
I think that's the only one we have.
And do you think the reference to controlled substance in this one that was shared covers, would that cover cannabis, or do you think it could apply to cannabis? Because it says liquor and, it also says...
Yeah.
Alcohol controlled substance.
Dangerous substance.
I don't know if that...
It might have in May. In May, it might have, but today, I would say, since it's been legalized, it may not.
It's controlled, though.
It's still controlled, that's correct, but it may be ambiguous.
Yep.
Vin, does this agree with the law itself, too?
So the draft ordinance that I provided takes Senate Bill 1201, I believe it's Section 184, and basically allows you, it restricts cannabis to the greatest degree a municipality can. Okay, so that's why I said, if you adopt it as is, you're doing, you're going as far as the law will allow you. So if you feel you should not be as strict, then you could change the definition of what public property is and you would narrow the scope of it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Would you like this item to remain on the agenda, or do you want to?
I think you're gonna have to.
We have to?
You don't have to. You could, I mean, we just brought it back because it was, you know...
So it'll stay the way Vinny has it written now, then?
No, we can do nothing.
You can do, you can, yeah, you have a couple of options. You can, you can just let it go and do nothing. You can decide that you want to set up a public hearing and move forward with it, or, you know, you can just put, table, or table it indefinitely until you give it more thought.
Right.
Or more research.
We don't allow people to drink a beer in our parks if you can blow a joint. I mean, seriously?
How about if we discover what Vinny's written now?
Right. I mean, it's, but the question was, do we have to do anything? Do we just keep it there? Right, we should.
I think it's a good idea to start with mimicking the alcohol, to, you know, just kind of...
We can't have alcohol right now. You cannot bring alcohol in our parks. That's why there's, we have that vote for the Poco Festival.
Right, we have to do it whenever they do.
That's what I'm saying. I think we should, we at least start with, you know, mimicking the alcohol. Whatever, we can't do alcohol, we can't do it.
And you could, rather than, rather than going in a brand-new ordinance, you can go to your alcohol ordinance and just add cannabis into that.
Yeah, we can amend.
You could simply amend what you have in your books rather than putting up...
But you still have to have a public hearing.
You would still have to have a public hearing.
You gotta have the hearing then, huh?
Yeah.
You just have to decide what direction you wanna go in because we'd have to present a proposed amendment or a new ordinance.
I feel like it should be treated the same as alcohol and cigarettes. I don't think we should go further, I don't think we should go back, but I feel like it should get the same treatment that alcohol and cigarettes.
Well, we could then, I could work with Vin, we could tweak the current ordinance on alcohol to include cannabis and bring it back to the council for the next meeting and modify that and then send that out to a public hearing process if you wanna go that route.
How does that, how would that be as far as us having, we'll say cannabis stores?
That's different.
Different because we still, I believe, have a moratorium on that.
That's correct. And the moratorium is currently in effect and the zoning commission, I believe, is going to be acting on their, in their first meeting in October on extending that moratorium, I believe, another 12 months. Thank you.
Now, that moratorium, that was for dispensaries for medical marijuana, is that right?
That was medical.
It repeats all of this?
Correct.
Yes, it just, I guess, is the consensus of the council to have them come back with, either at the next meeting or the first meeting in October, however long it takes to come back with something proposed, you know, to amend.
Modification of the current ordinance, 88, Chapter 88.
Right.
Okay, next is, I don't see anybody here from the Board of Ed.
Yeah, the superintendent indicated it'll be coming on the 21st.
Okay, we can skip that. All right, moving to 13, new business discussion in action. QA and M proposal on brick masonry work at North Branford Intermediate School.
Yeah, and as I mentioned earlier, you have the response from Rusty from QA and M, and I think, I think it would be best to table any action on that and request that he come on the 21st to walk the council through that process scope, really, and understanding that, and the project cost estimate, which is based on.
Okay.
Earlier, I heard mention on the roof, this doesn't, this is the brick, right?
Well, no, in Rusty's thing, it says the new scope will include the replacement of the existing roof with changes to the parapet profile. But the whole question is, is the whole roof getting replaced?
Yeah, it sounds like the whole roof is gonna get replaced.
Well, again, those are the...
Yeah, but because the, what is it, the seam, the tin roof, the pitched, then there's the whole issue of all the mechanicals.
Right, right. And so, yeah, I think he'd like to come to talk about, you know, what the full roof replacement would mean and, you know, again, it's a membrane roof, right?
Correct.
So number of issues when, just after...
Well, and just the cost of that.
Yeah, right, right.
I mean, just the brick alone, we were in the $4 million range before.
Well, that, that, yeah, again, so in my mind, it's all about Rusty explaining the scope and how far this council wants to go. This is a four, five, six million dollar, who knows? I mean, it's a, at least what he's scoping out is a $4 million project.
Then does it make sense to fix the brick if you're not gonna fix the roof?
Well, no, we have to do something to do, we all know, I mean, that was explained to us. We have to do something with the roof, but is it replacing the whole roof?
Right.
Or is it just in the sections that were having issues?
We need him to come and explain.
Yeah, we do.
Because it's not, to me, when I read this, it sounded like the whole roof.
Correct. That's the way I took it also.
Has anybody ever tabulated how much money is spent on MBIS?
Don't wanna do that. Well, so far, it's, we only had about $200,000 that the Board of Ed gave back to us and stuff, and I believe we did not spend all of that money. So it's, that was the cheapest part of fixing the problem, but now we're to the expensive part of really fixing, of, they did the interior part, now we have to do the exterior part of it. So, and it's just unfortunate that we have no alternative to go back to the original construction people and design people to get any of this money.
So where do we go from here?
Will we wait until the next meeting when Rusty comes?
Okay. Anything else? All right, so next, we have estimate on Water Main Line for North Branford Police Department, North Branford Public Works.
Yeah, so this was, obviously, the notion was that we were going to stay on Forest Road, either at 305 Mooney Property or the Poco side. So it was important for the committee to look at, you know, what the cost would be to bring Water Main up Forest Road. So I engaged the water company and asked for them to put together, and it's 2.6 million, that is ARPA fund eligible to do that. But at this point, it seems like that would be on hold until the committee's able to evaluate where the building is going to land, so to speak, in terms of its evaluation, site evaluation. So it's food for thought, it's eligible, and it's, that's their, that's their number, 2.6, for water.
For water?
Yeah, so we can just hang on to that and just kind of keep that in our back pocket and then wait to see where the committee comes up in terms of their site evaluation.
Okay. All right, next, we have approval of job description for Public Works Superintendent.
Yes, so Fran is looking to add a position January, so trying to get things in order, crafted. This is a new position, so we've got a job description before you to approve, as we do for any position. It's gotta go through the council to approve the job description, so. That's the superintendent.
Well, this is Franny's work product. He put this together?
Yeah, yeah, Fran, exactly, reached out to others, put that together. Then I sat down with him and reviewed, and also had our town engineer look at it as well. So it was sort of a team effort, but started with Fran, and he's had a full review of it. Couldn't be here tonight, but he, he's...
He's on board.
He's on board, yep, he's on board.
Mike, is this moving someone up into that position or hiring someone new?
Well, you know, it remains to be seen. I, you know, I don't know the answer to that. If there's somebody internally that would be interested and/or qualified to do that, we'd have to wait and see. But it's just sort of getting it, getting it ready for that process.
Vinny, is there any need to have you review this? Or have you already?
This is the job description?
Yeah.
Superintendent, yeah.
Did it go to Courtney?
I don't think, no, it didn't.
I can have, I can have Courtney remove, review it.
Okay.
I would review it, but she would criticize it.
So can you just bring it back at the next meeting after it's courted?
Sure, yeah.
Okay. Town Improvement Fund, Fund 803.
As we're preparing to go to the munis part of life, we're going through some old funds. And this 803 fund actually dates back, I believe it was 1996?
Eighty-six.
1986, I'm sorry. State had a surplus, gave the town of North Branford $119,300. At the town council, it is the body per ordinance that was blessed to sanction the distributions. As of today, there's roughly $1,100 there, up to you folks, how you wanna spend. So the motion is kind of blank. I'll authorize distribution of the balance fund 803, Town Improvement Fund to be used as...
So what's, is there any recommendations?
I believe it's up to you folks.
Then we'll be broke.
We could, we could make suggestions, bring it back next meeting. I don't know if you have anything in mind. It's not, not a ton of money.
Can we divide it up equally between all the taxpayers?
We could, give or pay 37 cents. Might cause us more mail to be checked out.
We invested that with more money back in 1986, you know, what it'd be worth now.
So I don't know, it needs to go out, come to your mind, if you wanna mull it over, bring it back next meeting, or...
Throw it on the budget next year?
Well, it's capital money, so it really shouldn't be an operating expense, it'd be like a one-time thing. You could put it towards the software project, you could put it towards the fence, you could put it towards...
We should put it towards the fence because it's... Well, I, well, I saw what they used it for on the, you know, originally, so...
Originally, there was money put aside to develop a community center back in Yates. That material went down, so.
It seems to be decent, safe money for Mr. McCoy's...
What if we put it in the website?
It's a massive zero, but it's really good.
It's up to you guys.
Put it in the website fund?
Website fund? We make website funds. Yeah, we're gonna pay money for the website, sure.
A suggestion.
Towards, towards the whole big construction and the revamp of the website. Okay, so make the motion.
Make a motion to put the $1,100 towards the...
Well, there's a whole suggestion.
Oh, you got it.
Nice try.
I'd like to move the motion as suggested, and we'll fill in the blank with "to be used as website redesign, the town's website redesign."
I'll second that.
Okay, thanks, Marie. Motion made by Councilor Angeloni, second by Councilor Diamond. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, please, Michelle, when you're ready?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
The next item is probably the final corrections, final transfers for the 2021 year. Our hope is to wrap it up towards the end of this month and have the auditors come in in October to begin their work. Again, some smaller corrections, some larger ones in the bottom of that first page. We budgeted dental, not part of the medical, but it gets charged one way, so it's just basically the money from dental insurance to medical. Budget, separately, it gets charged in real life, one number. The employee leave is a function of, we had some significant payouts, recall, we had a police officer and a town engineer that left with significant payouts. Second page, there was a motion made by the Park and Rec Commission sanctioning, basically, culminating in any funds they had left over to create a new fund for park maintenance to be overseen by the Public Works Director and Park Recreation Director. And that's the large number there. The other ones, quite honestly, are just end-of-year transfers to kind of clean things up. Maybe there's a question that's happy to address.
Make the motion to approve the appropriation transfers as submitted.
I'll second that. Motion by Councilor Angeloni. Motion by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Goo. Uh, any further discussion? Can I have a vote, please, Michelle?
Sure, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Okay. Uh, next we have citizen statements and petitions. Anybody have anything?
Uh, one.
None, none that I have, uh, on the, on the email, but I, I just want to revisit under this section. Just, I talked pretty fast on the ARPA, and, and one of the things I, I missed. It, in the memo, uh, there's eligibility for, uh, nonprofits, so the council may want to consider, um, you know, the possi- you know, possibility of, of either grant or loan to nonprofits, be, you know, perfect example is the Historical Society not being able to raise funds or do fundraising through the COVID period, um, so there's a mechanism in terms of eligibility. If the council's willing to do something like that, they could develop a process to, um, you know, gather documents, show that, and then award or grant or loan money to nonprofits. So, just one of those things I, I didn't highlight, but wanted to go back and highlight now. For your consideration.
Thanks, Mike.
Can you, can you ask the Historical Society to kind of, if they have a list of, like, projects that they were thinking of doing that they haven't been able to fundraise for and estimate it cost?
Yes, Dottie came in, saw, talked to me, and, and I can certainly reach out to her to put it on. I mean, she gave me some material, uh, but I'll, I'll get in more detail and present and bring back for the next meeting.
Yeah, just so we have some idea.
Yeah, absolutely, sure.
Wasn't there an item we needed to ask guidance on Vinny for, in the beginning of the meeting?
Yes, sorry, you're right. Um, Ron's question to, uh, the East Haven, um, agreement about the language to get out, opt out at any time, correct?
Yeah, I was looking at the severability and termination section, and I, you know, I just breezed over it really quick, but, um, my concern was that if we enter into that agreement and we find very quickly that it's, it's putting too much stress on our employees, do we have the, the ability to opt out at any time?
It was my understanding, uh, that the agreement was going to extend only till November 1, and I think I joked that by the time this gets approved, it's gonna be over. So, uh, you know, generally speaking, when you enter into intermunicipal agreements, you can work opt-out provisions in it, but generally, at fairness to the other municipality, provide some type of a notice period, so that they can be transitioning and you don't just leave the other municipality hanging in the middle of the night. Again, unless something has changed, uh, this time, the time span here is, I think, only supposed to extend till November 1st, uh, so I don't know, to answer your question, yes, we can build that in, but I don't know if time would allow for much of an opt-out. And I don't know what they're gonna say about the time period. They may not, they may be looking for something longer.
So, have you conferred with their attorney in drawing this up, or?
No, no, uh, I just, I conferred with the town, uh, town manager, and I didn't want to take any action. If you all thought it was a bad idea, well, I didn't want to send something out to, uh, East Haven without getting your authority to do so.
So, so we need to take some action on this, so we don't...
Like, through November with option to renew or option to extend on a monthly basis, or?
I don't, I don't think your employee wants it to go forward.
Okay. Right, I believe that's what Mike said.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. So, I, I...
I think the practical answer to your question on it really is, if we've got reservations, don't do it. At all.
But the feeling of our employee was that he was willing to do it, he wanted to, he wanted to do it, but...
Yeah, maybe, well, willing, willing to help out, but again, saying, listen, this has to be a finite, I, I, you know, November 1 is where he, he drew, he was drawing the line and said, "Yeah, I'll help out, no problem, okay, but I gotta get back to the office, you know, no, no longer than November 1st." Um, and, and that's reasonable, I get it, he's got his workload as well. Um, and again, subject to the, the other, you know, East Haven living up to their, you know, giving them a laptop, giving them an email address, so he can, you know, not have to commute back and forth and do all days, he can be, you know, remotely, uh, that would help David. And David said, "Okay, yeah, yeah," you know, "As long as they live up to their end, um, we can, I can help them as much as I can help them," um, and I think we just need this to sort of protect it, both, both sides, so...
So, do we build anything in as far as number of hours a week? Or we just let it up to the employee?
Yeah, we were, yeah, we were scaling back, no more than, no more than two hours a day, and I think, again, we're gonna try, I'm gonna talk with David again, but I want to scale that, even scale that back, not in terms of onsite hours, uh, and have a remote, you know, answer an email while he's here, you know, rather than being, you know, there.
Right, I, I think it's, it's also, uh, because it's kind of almost a professional position, and what you'd be billing, East Ha- East Haven's obligation would be to pay you 1/12th of what it would pay its assessor, which is $8,529.
Right.
So, in a sense, your assessor would be providing what a full-time assessor would be providing. It would, he would become that department's head, supervisory of its employees for the period of time that he is in that role, right? Because, again, otherwise, what, East Haven's gonna be saying, "I'm gonna give you $8,500 a month for, you know, two hours," or, I, I think realistically, your assessor steps into the role of assessor and performs the role of assessor. And based on when Mike and I sat down with the assessor, I felt he was confident that he could perform that function, but he felt, uh, he wanted to perform it for a limited window of time. And he, and when I put together the, uh, scope of the services, again, supervision of the town of East Haven employees working in the assessment department, establish regular office hours within East Haven and Town Hall, and be available to the public by phone and in person during the established office hours, confer with the town attorney regarding pending tax appeals, perform all necessary actions prescribed by state statute or local ordinance that arrives during the term of the agreement. So, basically, he's going to be the East Haven assessor for 60 days, for whatever time is now left. And I, and you have to look at it like that.
And East Haven's paying the town of North Branford.
You're, you're receiving.
Right.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, correct.
They're not paying the assessor, they're paying the town.
The town.
Yes.
I, I think we should do it. If our town manager, if, if our town assessor believes he has the capacity, if our town manager doesn't see an issue with the capacity, and it's such a finite period of time, I mean, I like that idea of, you know, our, our, we should all support it.
Yeah, you know, I think it's important to help out our neighbors, too, that, because you never know, well, we might need help with something, so, um...
Yeah, we have a few open positions ourselves.
True.
We have a few open positions ourselves, so you never know.
I know.
Vin, do we need to add in there a clause that, uh, that can't steal our employee?
I was thinking that, too.
What's the liquidated damages? Let's just go to...
How do you enforce that? Not your people, you guys, yeah.
When I, when I saw what they were paying, I was gonna go back to school for it myself.
So, do you, so do you need a vote on it?
I, I think, yeah, a simple motion to authorize us to, to continue, or to, to finish and proceed with, uh, East Haven, based on the, on the draft that you have there.
Uh, so, with what Mike said?
Second, he's in the temperature, he's got the discretion to marry that to the city.
Alright, wait, two.
Councilor Angeloni, Councilor Fawnin. Any further discussion?
Okay.
Can I have a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Do you got a bill?
No, I, I don't, but I'll, I'll figure it out. Uh, approve the agreement as drafted.